Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVeert?
Here. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is, item three. Pastor Michael, I'm sorry. I, I almost skipped you. We have our community invocation. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Pastor Michael, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. And if I may, I'd like to invite you, Madam Mayor, and the council, and everyone here, to our 10th consecutive presentation of Journey to Betheli this Friday through Sunday night.
Wow. And if you haven't been, the live nativity is, is just really amazing, so...
Thank you. So forgive me for throwing that in.
That, that's all right. I would have been disappointed if you hadn't.
Thank you. Father in heaven, we want to thank you for the reason for the season. And as we think of the hope that was brought to us in the first Advent, we also recognize that daily life goes on. And what more important than to be living it in the city of Meridian, Idaho. And so we pray that your grace will shine down on us and on these proceedings this evening. We ask in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And thank you. And Pastor Michael, I, I think it is important to note that this is a collaboration between your church and a number of others. So please join in. Okay, item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There are no changes to the agenda as published, so I would move that we adopt the agenda.
Second?
A motion of second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that all ayes? I think. Okay, item five, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was one sign up. However, their intended discussion topic is item nine A later on on your agenda. So that's what they intended to speak about. Other than that, there were no other sign ups.
Thank you. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Will you approve the consent agenda as published, for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest?
A motion of second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So we'll move to our community presentations under eight A as our mayor's chief advisory councilor. And Logan, I can't believe you still have shorts on. It is cold outside.
You know, I love shorts. It's what I gotta do.
You and Councilman Palmer have something in common.
Madam Mayor, I have worn pants two days in a row.
Oh, my gosh.
This is a record.
Let's make it three.
See, there's hope for you yet, Logan.
Uh, we'll see. All right. Madam Mayor, City Council members, thank you for having us. I'm Logan.
I'm Ben, Vice Chair of MIAC.
I'm the Chair of MIAC. And first, we'd like to start off with talking about our walk audit. During October, we took our general council members and executive council members through downtown Meridian. Our reason for this was for our participatory budgeting, we plan on focusing on downtown Meridian and finding ways to improve sidewalk streets, whatever the general council members seem most beneficial. So we took this walk audit to show our MIACers downtown Meridian and to show them what exactly we'd be looking at for our participatory budgeting project. It was a great success. Lots of MIACers were talking about it and found it very useful. And I think we have some really good options for our participatory budgeting project. And then also in October, we had our trunk retreat, which was very, very successful. We had about 10,000 people in attendance, lots of trunks, lots of MIACers volunteering and being active, which was amazing. And as you could see, all the amazing costumes that people had. So yeah, that was a very amazing experience as well.
Next in November was rake up Meridian. We had over 20 MIACers turn out for this, which was a great turnout, especially compared to last year. So we were really excited to have all those MIACers show up. We got four houses raked, and this was done in two hours. So we were moving very efficiently this time. One of our members brought a leaf blower, which we found very helpful, despite the name rake up Meridian. I believe it was, it was worth it. We had a fantastic time, and we did a really time effective event this, this year. Next was legislation. Each year in MIAC, we come up with a legislation that we want to be focusing on for the rest of the year. We decided to focus on this year, changing the voting age from 18 to 17 in primary elections. What this means is changing the voting age to if you're going to be 18 during the actual election, then you're allowed to vote when you're 17 during the primary election. So an interesting statistic that was brought up was over 10,000 additional voters would have voted in this last election if this was passed already. Coming up is our PB Expo. We want to invite you to it. It's, we're having five presenters talk about their participatory budgeting ideas. The presentations will be on January 15th and January 14th. And there will be five of those. And then going back to our rake up Meridian, after that event, we had our bowling social. We had about 10 MIACers come and join us. We rented out two lanes at Meridian Lanes and had a really great time there. Our upcoming events are the MIAC Christmas party on December 10th, and then we're baking Christmas cookies for first responders on December 22nd.
And then also, this isn't on our presentation, but we wanted to talk about our future event of the National League of Cities, our youth leadership conference that we go to in Washington, DC. We had talked to Councilman Burnt and Councilman Palmer about funding for that. And we had heard back from Councilman Burnt, but we hadn't heard back from Councilman Palmer. So we're wondering how you were feeling about fundraising with us.
Nice. I love it.
Nothing like putting him on the spot, right?
On record.
Mr. Palmer?
You're kind of my hero right now, because this is exactly what I would have done in high school.
This is fantastic.
The mayor can attest to that. Yeah, I'm in. And I bet there's some other people in the room, in the audience, that might want to help us out too, since we're in the mood of calling people out. But I won't get specific. So yeah, let's chat.
All right.
And, and that is what you both brought up during the budget hearings, that you would be happy to join them in identifying some potential sponsors and, and helping direct them their way.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
To be fair, I was most highly interested when I was, when it was in a way to be able to prevent using tax dollars for it. But once that went away, and we were going to use tax dollars anyway, my motivation was less there, and that we were just going to be adding to what the tax dollars were already going to be. But I think it is a valuable experience. So the, the more of you that can be there, the better. And hopefully, we can find enough private money to, to make a lot of it happen, because I do feel it's inappropriate to use the tax dollars for it. But we'll see how many we can get you there anyway.
Thank you, Councilman Palmer. Any further questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Just a comment. I appreciate the report. You guys have a lot going on. The whole group's doing a wonderful job. For the January 14th PVP Expo, one of the focuses that started this type, this program was to try and give a voice to a, you know, segment of the population that might not otherwise have an ability to help fund items that are important to their population group, right? So the youth in this case. So for those folks that are going to be presenting, whatever their proposals are, to ensure that there's a focus on how this is, you know, youth specific or trying to address a need that is important to the youth, perhaps, you know, we, we might be missing it up here. But it's still an opportunity to, to help serve the young folks in our community. So that needs to be part of their presentations in purpose. I think that'll be important for whatever the ultimate project is for its success when it comes back before us later in the spring.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Helpful comments.
Okay, anything further? Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, eight B is under our Community Development Department. We have a new CDBG administrator, and so I'll turn this over to Caleb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, it is my absolute pleasure to introduce you to Crystal Campbell. We've actually changed the title, no longer Community Development Block Grant Administrator. It's Community Development Program Administrator. So if you see that same role, just a little bit of a shift in the title there. Crystal comes to us from the Department of Health and Welfare. So I think some of her experience and, and background there will be a great help as she administers the CDBG grant. I feel for her, but I appreciate her because she's jumped right in, kind of cleaned up some of the messes that I've made in the past couple of months while we've been administratorless. But been a great help so far in responding to monitoring that we had earlier this year and some comments from HUD and kind of getting the program on track as we move forward with the program. And I think she's a great add to the city. And she's here tonight to talk to you about our CAPER. So unless you have any questions for me, I just will turn it off, turn it over to Crystal, and hope you take it easy on her tonight.
Please. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilman. So I'm here today to discuss the annual report. It's officially called the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, but we refer to it as the CAPER. So the purpose of the CAPER is just to give an overview of what we've done over the past year. It's not a time for us to ask for new projects or new funding or anything. We're just going over what we've already done and updating you as to how it fits in with the consolidated plan, the five-year goal that we have set. And the program year, it, it runs from October 1st, 2017, to September 30th, 2018. So that's the timeframe that we'll be discussing. So we have several projects. There's a variety of them. Some of them are multi-year projects, some of them are one-time, and some of them are ongoing that get refunded every year. And some of the program, or projects that we've completed this year are the Meridian Food Bank Hunger Relief Program, the Streetlight Design and Construction, the Boys and Girls Club Scholarship Program, and the Jesse Tree Homeless Prevention Program. We have a couple of projects that are still open. They will be, for the most part, they're going to be closing out this year. There's some of them that may go a little bit further. But the ongoing projects that we have right now are the Meridian Elementary Picnic Shelter Field Reseed, the Downtown Sidewalk Design and Construction, Ada County Housing Authority Homebuyer Assistance, and the Neighbor Works Boise Homebuyer Assistance Programs, as well as some Fair Housing activities. So this is what the program is really about. This is the exciting piece. For the program year 2017, we were able to work with the Meridian Food Bank to provide house, food stability for 3,977 households, which is actually close to 11,000 individuals in Meridian. And that's just using CDBG funds. They also did a lot more than that using other funding sources. We also were able to fund scholarships for 25 children to participate in Boys and Girls Club, Club programs that allowed them to attend the before and after-school programs so that they could get access to food, healthy snacks, tutoring, good mentors for children. And it allowed parents to have a safe place for their kids to go when they were trying to work or do whatever they needed to do. We were also able to work with Jesse Tree of Idaho to prevent homelessness for four families. They worked with case managers through Jesse Tree and provided funding resources for them. We had five families that were able to be first-time homebuyers through either the Ada County Housing Authority Program or Neighbor Works Boise with their homeownership programs. They provided housing counseling and down payment assistance for those who meet the eligibility requirements. We also worked on Fair Housing Campaign and Events throughout the Treasure Valley. We collaborated with NAPA Caldwell and Boise to put that on. And we'll be doing some more in the spring. And we also installed 30 streetlights for visibility so that kids can walk to school when it, in the dark where it's a little bit safer. So those are some of the big things that we've done this year. This chart represents what we said that we would do as far as direct services go. So as far as improving accessibility, we have a sidewalk project. And it shows that we are at a 0% completion rate, but that's due to the multi-phases of projects like that. We've gone through the design piece, but now we're working for the construction. So we're actually further along than it looks like on here. As far as enhancing homeownership activities, we had originally said that we were going to assist 11, but we've only been able to help five so far because of how expensive homes are in Meridian. People have been having a hard time finding affordable housing for the group of low to moderate income households that qualify for this. So right now, we're at 45%. And we may need to look in future years at changing our goal for that one. As far as providing social services, we are doing great there. We're at 194%, thanks mostly to the food bank. They serve so many people there. And stabilizing the rental gap through homeless prevention, we had anticipated serving five households, but the funding only went for four households. Just the bills were a little bit more expensive for that one. We also have some outcomes related to collaborative initiatives on this one, improving accessibility. During program year 17, the CDBG staff participated in planning for tran, public transportation options for low-income and special needs populations. So we're on track for that one. Stabilizing the rental gap, we had planned to start developing an affordable housing plan and marketing to developers for supportive rental developments beginning in program year 2018. So that's coming up, and we're on track for that one. We're also on track for creating a plan for accessible environment for persons with disabilities. And we have met our goals of supporting regional fair housing campaigns and trainings and administering the program during program year 17. So the previous CDBG staff, they, he did a really great job of getting involved and making sure that he participated in conversations around affordable housing with these entities, the Ada County Continuum of Care Housing and Homelessness Round Tables, and the Idaho Fair Housing Forum. So we're going to keep up those collaborations and keep reaching out to different entities so that we can be part of that conversation. So the goal for program year 2017 was to remain timely and keep organizing the program so that we could just continue to do the good work that we've been doing, as well as to expand the participation partnership and conversation with regional groups. So that brings us to today. Some important dates. The CAPER is now open for public comment. So we're hoping that people will look at it and let us know what they think and what you would like to see. Again, it's nothing new. It's just reporting on what we've already done. It is available at the website that I have listed here, or you can pick it up down the hall in the Community Development Department. And I also have a few copies in the back with my card on them. So you can reach out to me. You can call me or email me, or get the information to me however you want. And then I will be back on December 18th to present the summary of public comment, sorry, lost my word, to, to present that and any big changes that we've made to the document so that we can hopefully get you guys to adopt it at that time. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, Dean. Thank you, Crystal. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Crystal, a couple of questions. Don't expect you to have to answer them tonight. Welcome first to the city.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. First question was, in the report, it talked about the scholarships for the Boys and Girls Club. And I noticed there was one scholarship that was made to somebody who didn't fall within the LMI criteria. Is that common? Is, or is, does that put us in any type of jeopardy that we're paying for an individual who doesn't fall within the LMI category?
I will have to look at that, because I thought they, I had made some errors on how they were calculating it. They were using old calculations. And so when we went back through, I thought that they all qualified. But I'll double check that and get back to you on that one.
And that would be a great fault before we come for the public hearing.
Okay.
The second piece, and you touched on this, which I think is a really good question, is how we look at affordable housing. You referenced, which I think is a concern amongst everybody in the council, many in our community, is about the high cost of homeownership in Meridian.
Right.
So when you talk about maybe making changes, does that relate to increasing the amount of money that we make available for down payment assistance? Is it changing how we look at what affordable housing really is in Meridian? Can you give me just a little more information on that? Because it's an issue that's really important to me.
Right. I think as far as what I was talking about on that one, I would probably suggest that we look at serving fewer households with the same amount of money and putting a little bit more money towards it. But I haven't talked to my supervisor yet, so we'll see what he thinks.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Always ask the new person these questions. We appreciate you getting back to, on the answers to these and, and also having it prepared to the public when we have that. Any further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Not a question, but a comment. Well done. I know that this is, this is your first presentation to, to the mayor and the council, and so it wasn't too bad, was it?
It was great.
It's great. You did a fantastic job.
Thanks.
Very well done. Thank you. I can tell that you were prepared, so thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Crystal. Okay, there's no action needed, so we'll just go ahead and move into action items. For those that are here and are new to the process, we do, when we have a public hearing, we open the public hearing with staff comments, who will introduce the application and, and answer any council initial questions. Then the applicant steps forward and also gives details regarding the land use application and seeking certainly counsel action. We then enter into the public testimony section. With each of those wishing to testify has three minutes. And on the computer screen at the podium, there is a little timer, so you can see where you're at in, in your time. The applicant then will get up and answer any questions that were raised during public testimony, answer any counsel questions, and then counsel does deliberate. And they will ask questions of staff, any of those that testified, or the applicant for any final clarification. And just an important note is there's a public record. It is available on our website at meridiansity.org, that you can find all the information that the council has had a chance prior to coming to the meeting tonight to review. So they can use that information as part of their deliberations. So with that, we'll enter into the action items. Item nine A is conditions for approval for H 2018 dash 0042. Mr. Nary, are you?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the council, at the prior hearing on this, Timber Creek, this matter was continued. The public hearing was closed. The intent of the continuance was to make sure the language that we discussed as part of the public hearing at the prior, prior date was clear and understandable and met the council's intent. You have in front of you in your packet, which I'm having trouble pulling up, the conditions of approval. We can walk briefly through them. The number one condition was regarding the 10-year time limit. So the council's direction at that time was that there would be a 10-year time period with a hard stop at 10 years. The applicant has the ability, one year prior to that expiration, so at the, at year nine, to be, at the end of year nine, to ask the council at that time whether they can continue the operation beyond the 10 years. The council, then, the rest of that, that section is all the process that occurs of hearing it and whether the council grants that or not. If not, it terminates at the end of the 10-year time period from this approval. The next modification is on the recycling material and the, the code enforcement means that can be used to enforce these provisions in addition to the provisions under the development agreement that already exists of enforcement of those conditions within the development agreement. So there's two methods for the city to enforce the conditions that are laid out in this document. The storing of recycling materials, again, all of it has to be stored within the defined recycling area. That was what condition three was talking about. There's a later section we'll get to, they have to make sure it's clarified on a, an exhibit what the recycling area will be. The next provision, the change number four, basically just simply identifies the other entities that have enforcement authority over this property, Central District Health, Department of Environmental Quality, Ada County Air Quality Board, Department of Water Resources, and others. And any violation of their conditions could be a violation of this agreement as well. The next one is regarding the screening and birmingham that needs to take place. Once this is done, and that, that, then they will give the city notice when that is completed. That has to be done prior to them beginning the tier two process. Other than there is some allowance for, there's some pre-testing that's required by DEQ, and they're allowed to do that. But otherwise, they need to have the birmingham done prior to the beginning of that tier two process. The next section deals with the materials on site in regards to both water sprinklers, water trucks and such. And then also has language regarding dustless material, and again, surfacing the recycling area of the property to make sure to keep the dust down in that area. The next provision is regarding the ponds of any, of any type that are on the property, that they have to be treated and maintained to make sure they're not mosquito breeding grounds. All the mechanical equipment, and this was the one that was a lot of discussion by the council, all the mechanical equipment excluding all private or commercial vehicles and operations, power-driven processing equipment, operation on the recycling property shall be located at least 300 feet from abutting residential districts. The shipping and delivery and storage areas of the recycling have to be 300 feet away from residential districts within the city of Meridian. So the council made clear that the, the hard operations of the machinery and the grinding and that kind of thing has to be at least 300 feet away from all residential districts. But the storage area and some of the other activities regarding recycling have to be 300 feet away from residential areas within the city. So we wanted to create that distinguishment there. We did allow, we did prohibit burning and incinerating of materials on site. There is some limited allowance for disposal through bearing of that, because some of this stuff is compostable types of materials. And then the last one is just a detailed site plan, again, defining the areas where the recycling is, the whole property, where the portions that are used for agricultural or non-recycling activities, basically a layout map of what is on all of this property within, and then the 36th specific area that is allowed for this recycling activity. Those were all the conditions. And again, the intent of this continuum was simply to make sure all the language was done, because we were trying to create it at the hearing while we were there. And that was the reason that the public hearing was closed. You have in front of you both these conditions for approval, as well as the findings and facts are nine B, and they are ready for your approval if you're ready to do that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Mr. Borton at the last meeting, when we discussed this, asked about maybe coming up with an exact date, so there wouldn't be any, like, question in regard to the sunset clause in 10 years?
So, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Burnt. So the, I'm trying to read this, so. So the 10-year period is from the signed development agreement. So what happens from this is these conditions are then created to a modified development agreement that then has to come back in front of this council, is signed and dated and recorded against the property. So all of, in, in all of our development agreements, and there was dates or time periods, that's the way we normally have done it. We didn't pick a date specific in the agreement. We, we related back to the date on the signed agreement.
Okay.
So that was, that was our intent there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Because you'll have a clear start date, you'll also then have the clear potential end date, yes, from the signatures. And the, Madam Mayor, the additional uses that are provided in this modified DA can't start till it's signed and recorded anyway?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
I've been discussing it for a long time.
Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 9B is findings and fact pertaining to H. 2018-0042. You have those findings in front of you, council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve the findings of fact, conclusions of law for Timber Creek Recycling, H. 2018-0042.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9B. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 9C is a public hearing, continued from November 7th on H. 2017-0142. I will ask for staff comments at this time.
Madam Mayor, before Josh gets into his presentation this evening on that subject, just as I was excited to introduce Crystal to you earlier, I have some sad news. Josh is going to be leaving the city here next week, so this is his last meeting. I do want to just publicly thank him for his dedication to the city over the last three years. He's been with us, did a great job, and he'll surely be missed, but wish him well. He's moving back to Minnesota, so wish him the best, but I thought I'd just let you know that he is leaving our organization, unfortunately.
Well, we're certainly sorry to hear that, Josh. We've appreciated you joining us here mostly every single week and putting up with our questions, our discussion, and being tolerant of us. We thank you.
Well, feelings mutual. I appreciate that. So, this is the project before you here. This project originally started in about October of 2017. We've gotten where we are here. This is continued from, as you said, Mayor, the 7th of November, to cover a certain number of things, as outlined in the memo you have in your hearing outline. And so I'll go through that quickly, and just as a way of explanation, this is on the southeast corner of Venable Lane and Ustick Road, which is just a little bit southwest of Sellers Park. So, on the 7th of November of this year, City Council continued the subject application to tonight's hearing for the following reasons. They want to verify that the Ada County Highway District, that this property met their standards, their project met the standards, rather, that the applicant provided a TIS or traffic impact study to city staff. The hearing, the applicant indicated that we had received a TIS, and as indicated by the memo in front of you, we did receive it on the 26th of November, so there was some confusion about whether staff had in our possession a TIS. We have received that now. And then to address any conditions of approval from the staff report that are no longer relevant or to provide additional comments. And then I also list several conditions there that will be, that would need to be changed. Staff has reviewed back up a little bit. We didn't have enough time at the last hearing to review some of the revised plans, and we've now done that, and reflected those conditions to what would need to be changed in the conditions in order to make their current project function. So, staff has reviewed the proposed site plan, landscape plan, and elevations, and believes that with the above changes, that the project is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and is generally compliant with the UDC. The applicant will be required to obtain certificate of zoning compliance and administrative design review prior to obtaining a building permit for the project. If council approves the subject annexation request, the staff report will be updated with the revised exhibits and removal of the conditions noted above. I will say that this project is a little bit unique in that typically multifamily projects require a conditional use permit, but when the TNR zoning district is what they're asking for, it does not. And so with that, we don't right now have conditions or a staff report from the Ada County Highway District, because there's not technically a development to review, it's just an annexation. So what we'll do is when we come forward with the certificate of zoning compliance, we'll forward that to Ada County. They've indicated they've got some concerns about the location of their drive aisles, especially out to Venable, but we'll address that with the certificate of zoning compliance. With that, staff is recommending approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Josh. Council, any questions at this time? Is the applicant here? If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Robnett. My address is 5103 Zamora, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to address a couple of things, and one of the things that you asked for was some clarification on the traffic study, and I did bring the traffic engineer that did that study, so it would probably be best if I just brought him up to tell us what he knows. I paid him a fair amount of money, so we can, Dan, if we could have you come up?
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan Thompson with Thompson Engineers. Business address at 181 East 50th Street in Garden City.
Thank you.
We did complete this traffic study to the satisfaction of ACHD. We did prepare the scope of work in coordination with them, and we had good findings, since they had just recently reconstructed Ustick to five lanes. We had a lot of good findings, that there was sufficient capacity to handle the development. We did submit this to ACHD for their review. I don't know why there wasn't a comment back from them, but they were given a copy of this traffic study. I guess, did we get any comment back from them?
No, we didn't. The only comments that we got back from them, that it was acceptable, but a couple of things that I did include were your charts, Dan, from your analysis of the volume, vehicle volume. You'll have to forgive us, the original traffic study was done at the time that we had proposed 272 units, so these counts will actually be 30% lower than what they're stating. But if you look at this slide we have, it's of the traffic that we will create in addition to what's already there on Ustick and Venable, and if you want to just walk them through what that really means.
Oh, this is really something only an engineer could get excited about.
That's the whole slide.
The whole slide? Oh, okay.
Yeah. I have it in print.
Well, it's pretty simple. Basically, what we found, if I can just summarize it, that in the PMP hour was our critical intersection in our critical time period, and what we found out is that the intersection of Venable and Ustick Road with the improvements on the south by the development will operate at a level of service D, which is acceptable level of service for Ada County Highway District. And that was actually on the, that level of service D was actually on the southbound approach, that they suffered that, so.
The other, the other thing that this shows is that the flow rate off of Venable with the 272 units would be approximately 95 cars an hour. The capacity for that, as designated by ACHD, is 661. So we're less than 14% capacity that's been designed by ACHD. So when you go back to the comprehensive plan and what the city has put into place with that, it's the design of everything around it that makes this an ideal site, because you've already done the improvements to the Ustick traffic lanes that would then allow for the adequate flow of traffic through this area. So we're not adding congestion to an area that's not been improved, we're adding the congestion to an area that puts it far below the service levels that are found acceptable by ACHD. So, we, that was the main finding on that slide. The, I didn't see in here where you had gone through into the traffic that was actually at Ustick and Meridian Road.
That was not requested to be included in the study by ACHD, so we did not include that.
But again, I've.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Could I, I was going to ask you about that. I don't know if the clerk can pause your time for a minute, so I'm not using up your time asking a question. So, yeah, my main concern, and listening to a lot of the neighbors, they were concerned within their development, but I don't think Ustick is a concern. Ustick has been improved. Meridian Road is the concern.
Right.
And I don't know if Meridian is going to be improved between Ustick and Fairview before this development will be complete, or if it will be years to come. But I do know that on that road, during rush hour, traffic has backed up from City Hall to Ustick, going northbound. Anyway, listening, that was, so you don't have any of those numbers? Do we have a traffic study for Meridian Road and to know where this would add to that?
At the time of the study, which was about a year ago, it was included in their five-year plan. I don't know what year they have it penciled in for, but it was widening of Lynder Road, or Meridian Road, excuse me, was included in the five-year plan.
Okay, well, maybe we could find out what the level of service on Meridian Road is currently.
I have six. I apologize. If you look at the, if the Meridian Road and Indian Rock intersection.
You can't talk while you hand out, because we need you on the record. And someone will make sure that the clerk has that for the public record.
If you look at the Meridian Road and Indian Rock intersection, there's a 16-point-something-second delay currently. After the build-out of our project in 2020, we'll increase that by 1.3 seconds, is all the more traffic we will add. If you go further in the traffic study that has been given to staff, you'll find that actually more traffic comes out of the subdivision behind us onto our project and onto the road of Venable that we will improve than we send back through, just by the sheer head count and the ease of traffic if you're going certain directions, you will naturally navigate through. So by having 196 people added to, or 196 dwellings added in the apartment complex versus the 400 and change houses behind, if you're trying to go northbound on Meridian Road, you'll find it easier to come out onto Ustick and grab the turn lane and go that way than you will to come out on Indian Rocks and wait that 16 seconds. So the traffic study does evaluate that, and they actually use our roads more than we would use theirs, and that's found in the traffic study. So, but we did not, we weren't required by ACHD to do, to make any notes of Ustick and Meridian. But the proposed opening of our project won't be until mid to end of 2020, so we will take approximately 18 months to construct. We probably won't begin construction until March, so we would be after the construction would be, is proposed to be complete on Meridian Road between Cherry and Ustick. So, I don't know if you saw that they've distributed the orange barrels, so traffic season is coming. So. And then the other question that the mayor asked us to address was the schooling, and if you don't have any other questions for Dan?
Council, any further questions? Thank you, Dan.
So, in order to answer the next question the mayor asked was, what about the schools? And what happened to that? To answer that, I think it's best to go back to the State of the City address given in February of 2010, just 186 short months ago. And I quote the mayor, when I say, "10 years ago, within our city limits, our school district had five elementary schools. Today we have 12. We had one middle school, today we have four. In '99, we had one high school. We have since added three more." Where there was little choice in education then, today our public schools have added professional, technical, and magnet programs. We now have four charter schools, four alternative, three private high schools that didn't exist 10 years ago. Education choices have increased dramatically. Opportunity in Meridian, specific to higher education, have gone from no choice and a need to travel to one public university and two private universities. In 2012, the Barbara Morgan School, that's the closest to this site, was under-enrolled and was then given to a magnet school. That's why there is no school close to this that is accessible to these children, unless they go through the lottery program. But Barbara Morgan, which has been renamed Chief Joseph, has assured us that they do have room for students, should they choose to apply for the lottery.
Barbara Morgan is the former Lynder Elementary.
Sorry.
But, that's all right.
Yeah.
It's all the same, right?
You understand where I'm going with that. So in 2012, due to under-enrollment, the school was changed from a public school to a charter school, and there is still that availability to the residents in the neighborhood for that. We also received an email from the superintendent of schools that we forwarded on to, did you get that?
It's in the packet.
That stated that the current public school of choice is currently enrolled at a level around 450, and that maximum capacity on that was considered to be 650, and that construction of this new school across the street by the park would not begin until that reached 725 students. That's their design, and that's what would happen. So if you were to just take the development that we proposed and you put a child in every door, you still don't have enough to push that school to capacity, to force the funding and the creation of the next school. And so even with the other properties developing next to us, which are not designated as a neighborhood with an option for a high density, you still won't reach capacity on that school if there was a child in every home on a four-house-per-acre development. Those are just the numbers that I've run, but that is where we're at, and that's the answer that I have from the school district and from the traffic study, so I'll stand for questions.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Shannon. Mr. Burke.
Mr. Robnett, what about the other, like, the Meridian Middle School and their enrollment, and also Meridian High School?
So, in the public comments, there weren't any questions about Sawtooth, but I believe Sawtooth is the element, or the middle school of choice. It's not, it's heritage?
I think it's Meridian, Meridian Middle.
Meridian.
Meridian Middle. We didn't receive anything back, but what the superintendent did indicate was that there was availability in all schools that covered this zone.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I think maybe some of the confusion's coming from the numbers that it looks like Eric sent you are different than the numbers that school district letter says. They're close, but not that close. Only one that the letter, the school district letterhead, the only one that it shows is overcapacity, is Meridian Middle, but it's undercapacity, because the capacity is the difference in the email versus the letter. Math is hard.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not privileged to your information. What we're showing from him, from Eric, shows that there is capacity.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, are you saying that they told, what they told you was that until Barbara Morgan, which is a school of choice, magnet school, is overcapacity, they're not going to build another elementary school in that area?
Until River Glen?
Until River Valley is.
River Valley, because that is the public school.
Yeah, they're both public schools. They're just one you have to, with the lottery, too.
Right.
Because if that wasn't a magnet school, if it wasn't a school of choice, I'm sure it would be way overcapacity right now.
Okay, any other questions at this time? Do we want to have this conversation on the record?
Sure, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Councilwoman Mylum was reminding me that it was a high-capacity ESL school, and I shared with her that it was also either the first or the second for free introduced school lunch.
Do you have anything further?
I don't have anything further.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, this enters into our public testimony section. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Catherine Garcia signed up to address the council on this topic.
Good evening, Neil Pugh. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Catherine Garcia, 2970 Northwest 8th Avenue, Meridian, Idaho 83646. My property will back up to all of this, and actually, the access road at the very southern portion will pretty much terminate into my backyard. The traffic, the overcrowding, the, this doesn't take into account the apartments on the corner, the housing development on the corner of Meridian and Eustick, the housing development already approved on the corner of Linder and Eustick, the additional, I think it's about 150 apartments being proposed on the corner of Linder and Eustick as well, all within a one-mile area. This does not take into account that. But against this development, Mr. Robnett has stated previously that he doesn't understand the opposition, and he'll bring up, you know, how nice the housing lots are that he's developing. No one is against the nine housing units that he's developing, quite the contrary. If all of his housing developments were as nice as he states that they're going to be, then nobody would be disagreeing with him. It's a disagreement with the, with the density that's going in there and the overcrowding of the schools that's there, the safety issue for the children, with all of the bus stops along Meridian and Eustick and Linder, I, I, you guys know better than I do the number of stops that there are, and that's public and charter, and people that get bussed everywhere, kids that get bussed all over the place. I'll see, and there's a daycare right on the corner of Blairmore and Eustick that also gets a bus that stops in front of it and, and the parental traffic there. The traffic, gentleman, the gentleman, the traffic engineer stated that basically there's going to be more traffic coming up onto Venable than will be going down. Well, the natural habit is for people to find the quickest route, and if they're trying to get through Meridian, when they do start construction, they're not going to wait on Eustick, which backs up as well during going to school times and coming home times. Mr. Palmer is very much in favor of apartments, and I get that, and I think there's a time and a place for it, and I think right now, you have so much on the books, and you've already approved so many apartments and housing developments and high-density housing, and I think that there's, that there should be more time given for Ada County to catch up. I understand you want to strike while the iron is hot when somebody wants to develop and take advantage of that, but at what risk? Meridian is known for being a wonderful place to raise a family, but if there's too much traffic all the time, and I'm worried, and people are worried about their children being out or being hit, there's been too many instances in the news lately where kids are being hit, getting on and off of buses. It's just a lot of traffic coming and going, and I think there should be a pause, and, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kevner.
Would you mind answering the question? I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
No, it's okay.
The first, thank you, Madam Mayor, the first time you were here, you gave what I thought was really, really compelling testimony about the concern of overcrowding in the schools and about having to be bussed to other schools.
They are. My neighbor, yeah, everybody goes to Chief Joseph because there is no room. My next-door neighbor, which he's unable to be here tonight, he's at a business meeting in Florida, they had their daughter on a lottery for four different elementary schools.
Madam Mayor, if I could maybe finish, and maybe that brings a question, it's okay. So what I'm trying to rectify was a very compelling testimony, testimony quite frankly that changed my mind on this particular project, rectifying it with a letter that we get from the school that says they're under. Now, I have my, oldest son is in a charter school, and we lotteryed in like nine different schools, and we didn't get into any.
Right.
So there's a difference between lottering for a charter school and going to the school that is within your neighborhood, and what I'm seeing here is that the elementary and the high school that would serve this neighborhood are undercapacity, that's counter to, I guess, the testimony that you provided, so I'm just, I'm trying to rectify, if, if, if in your testimony we were talking about being bussed to other schools, if that was referring to charter schools, or if that was referring to the neighborhood school that, that serves this, this area.
To be honest with you, my boys go to a dual immersion school down in Kuna, because it's important that they go and learn two languages for free. So I know that I have, for me, I don't, I'm not aware even what the homeschool is. I know most people drive three miles to go to take their children to Chief Joseph, which is super awesome for drop-off off of Eagle in the morning, but that's where they take, that's where several children on our street, that's where they go, is they go to Chief Joseph. That is, that I'm aware of, that that's where they go to, so. It's also the incoming housing that we can see, it's the, it's the, up to 300 units that are going in on Meridian and McMillan, the apartment, it's just the overabundance within a two-to-three-mile radius of apartments that you guys have already approved that are coming, that will be, again, in effect. So it's not just this one little thing, it's looking at the bigger picture, going, okay, you've already approved all of these other developments, how is that going to affect anything? So, and it's, on any social media platform, everybody talks about, you know, the overcrowding of the schools, getting their kids in, you know, overcrow, traffic. I mean, I take my boys to Cub Scouts right up on Meridian and McMillan at the, the church right there, right across from Paramount, and it's taken me 30 minutes to get from my house right up there at traffic time. That's not going to get better anytime soon. So, and we, I think everybody is understanding that traffic is a part of growth, and it's going to happen, but again, you guys have already approved a lot of apartments, and you've already approved a lot of housing developments, and it's going to take a really long time for ACHD and the school, the school boards to catch up with all of that, so.
Thank you.
John Carver also signed up to address the council.
Good evening, Neil Pugh. Please state your name and address for the record.
John Carver, 730 West Sinclair. Bless you. In Meridian, 83646.
Thank you.
And I want to apologize first, because last time I did this, I said, oh, we gave all our time to one guy, and then another 20 people came up here, and I apologize for that. We have had some contact with, with Shannon, Doug Taylor, who spoke last time, and he has shown a willingness to work with us who live in the Valen Court subdivision to the south of this proposed construction. They've made all the changes that we've asked for so far in the architecture and other things. That's great, we're all very pleased with that. We still have one concern, and that's the safety of the kids that live in our neighborhood. When ACHD and the traffic engineer and others talk about where traffic is going to go, well, if you plan exactly where people are going to go, and they follow that rule, that's great, but there's going to be an entrance into our subdivision from this, this other area. That's going to, we, we want, and we've been told we would get somehow from the, the people that are building it, speed bumps coming in, strategically placed speed bumps that would help protect the kids, also some signs, some signage, some speed limit signs, children playing signs, things like that. We're very pleased with all of that. But as Councilman, Councilman Mylum said, you know, when you get out on Meridian Road, and I, just tonight, anywhere between 3 o'clock in the afternoon and 6:30 at night, that's a disaster area on Meridian Road. And so when people are coming up Meridian Road and they have a chance to turn on Indian Rocks, or they might have a chance to turn on Sedgwick, the next street up, they're going to take that, they're going to come through our neighborhood to get back into this, this new subdivision. We know that's going to happen, and, and there's, there's just no way to hide that. So those speed bumps, or if there's something else that can be done, we'd like that done. We, we appreciate the fact that, that Shannon has worked with us, but we'd really like to see, like to see a little bit more, and I don't pretend to understand how to do that. But there is the problem that we're talking about schools and all the other things that are going on, there's just so much, and there's, there's a piece of property on that map immediately to the east of this construction area that's vacant now, and it's not going to be very long before somebody's come in here and they're going to want to- Yes, that's what I want. -put in another subdivision there. We understand that. But when I bought my property, I was expecting to have that property immediately to the east to at least be single-family housing. I mean, imagine this building, five buildings long in your backyard. I mean, it's four stories here, the, the height of this, and that's what you're going to get to look at. It's just not fair.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
John, thank you for your testimony. You mentioned that you are wanting more of what from Mr. Robnett?
That's the problem. I want more safety items, I want whatever, I don't have kids in there, but Doug Taylor has four. There are a whole bunch of kids on that one street, and with the extension of Indian Rocks that's going to go into the subdivision. We've talked about two different, on, on here, on, on Ridge, is that Ridgeby Avenue?
Madam Mayor, John, can you point to where you live on this map? You know how to do that?
No, but I'm about to learn.
Okay.
I'm guessing, oh, here we go. I live right there.
That's good enough.
I live right there, but the folks that are in these other houses that are right, right behind me, they're going to, their backyard is going to be, they're going to look at these buildings. Now, we don't expect mountain views, we, we know that's not going to happen, the way it was when I first moved in there 12, 13 years ago. We could see the mountains, the hills. We know that's gone. But if I have to look at buildings, the size of this building, that were going to be three and four stories high, and that, that's changed, they've brought it down a bit, that's great, but we're still, we're getting boxed in, is what we feel like. And I know we're going to have, it, we have to have progress, we understand that. We all want progress. But you guys, by virtue of our votes, get to make these decisions on what's going to happen around us.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
Hey Josh, is there a, a way that we can, I, I'd like to, John mentioned, going back, John mentioned that, that traffic would be coming off of Meridian through some roads that would, you know, create an unsafe environment where he lives. Is there a way that we can look on the public record and look at like a Google map to see what that, that pathway looks like?
Councilmember Burke, so this is a, John, I believe his house is out here, based on what his testimony says.
Yes, yes.
Meridian Road, it's a straight shot down Sedgwick, and you, it's really easy to get out to Meridian Road from-
Madam Mayor.
-his home, in my opinion.
Or you could even take a, a turn on Indian Rocks, and that's a straight shot all the way to the subdivision.
And that's our fear, is Indian Rocks, and where that bend is at the bottom there, that's where we want one of the speed bumps, because along those homes there is where a number of children live. And during the summertime, they're out there playing all the time, and quite frankly, those folks don't have backyards. There's nowhere for them to play. They have that little, there's a little park there that they can go to play in, but that's still going to be subject to that traffic coming down Indian Rocks. And so a speed bump just at, at the curve, plus another, oh, I did it, I'm sorry, another, another speed bump at the entrance coming in from, from Venable, that area, that would be nice. And my understanding is that Shannon has said that he would, he wants to work with us, and he would do that at his expense, which, that's great.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Neighborhood cut through traffic is the worst, but it happens everywhere.
Sure.
And no matter what goes in there, you're going to have that. So whether these are single-family homes, whether there was a business, no matter what goes in there, you're going to have cut-through traffic, it's just the way it is.
Absolutely.
I used to live in a crossroads over when they first put Walmart in, and I was talking to my friend, and he's like, well, I'll just take the shortcut. And I'm like, what do you mean the shortcut? And he went through my subdivision, and it made me so mad, and this was almost 20 years ago. So I, I totally understand, we get this a lot, and I think that the, you know, the more traffic mitigation that you can get in there, and is, is your best bet, because nothing is going to take away cut-through.
We expect it, and we also expect people will be coming out of our subdivision using their street to get back out to Eustick, cut, cut a little bit of traffic there. But I also know that the, the women in my subdivision, my wife included, have been discussing the possibility of getting their hair dryers and standing out there and pretending like they're working radar guns to scare the hell out of people when they're coming down the street.
I don't think there's a law against that.
That might work. Good idea.
It is a great idea.
I'm not going to argue with my wife.
Send us some pics, would you?
Appreciate that. And, and the police department, you know, they-
Yeah, they're in favor.
They've, they've got one of those speed signs already on Indian Rocks, 25, 25 mile per hour speed limit, and will let, slow them down, we hope so. But I know, having been a police officer at one time, I know the value of a, of a radar gun and somebody sitting on a motorcycle aiming it down the street, that'll slow you down real quick. Real quick, so we can do that.
Mr. Burke.
So John, you mentioned that you have received some assurances in regard to traffic I don't see how Mr. Robnett can make those assurances, since it's ACHD would be the one that would be making those-
Well, if we could get, if he can get ACHD to agree, that's my understanding, is that if ACHD will agree to it, I, if he's paying for it, I don't see why ACHD would have any problem putting up signs or speed bumps. I can't fathom how that would happen.
I think their process is, you have to have a certain number of the residents that live in that area that would agree to it.
I can get you that.
Not everyone likes speed bumps.
I can get you that. I guarantee you I can get you that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burke.
Mr. Robnett, have you received that information from ACHD?
Can we ask that at the, at the follow-up? Yes.
And I have not talked to Mr. Robnett about this. Doug Taylor informed me that he had spoken with him, and they exchanged emails and what have you, and that that was, he wanted to be the good, the good neighbor, and this was, what could we do to help? That was what we decided he could do to help, was the signs and the speed bumps, and I don't see a lot of expense in that personally.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Love Roberts.
Madam Mayor, it looked like Joe had a comment for us, if that's acceptable.
Thank you, Councilwoman. What, I was just going to make the comment that, make sure you come visit the fire department, because we don't do speed bumps. We've had that discussion here, we do pillows.
But they've learned how to maneuver around them, so we're, we're okay, John. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there are no other sign-ups.
Okay. Is there any other testimony on this item?
My name's Tamara Heron, I live at 3464 West Fiano Drive in Eagle, Idaho. I'm actually part-owner of the complex that's right next to this on Venable, the 80 units. I don't, I just started managing it fairly recently. The entrance right there that you see off of Venable goes into my parking lot, and so I'd like to actually close that off so that, that can't be used as a thoroughfare. My biggest concern, and I don't mind the development, that's all great, because I'm interested in that, but gutting out onto Eustick Road, we all go out, down a little bit further on Eustick, and there have been several traffic accidents going in and out, left and right off of, it comes in, it's closer in, it's right near my property right there, there, I don't know, right there, yeah. There's been several accidents going in left and right, so if they could put a traffic light there, that would be awesome, because then at least you know you can get out going left and right. But like I said, I'm planning on closing off that because it goes into my parking lot, so that that won't be through, through traffic to the other exit. Coming out left on Venable is going to be an impossibility. Already, going left and right onto Eustick, I mean, going right is fine, but going left, we have lots of problems, so, but I love, the development's fine, I just would love to have a light there to avoid any kinds of accidents, or at least help with accidents. That's all. That's all.
Thank you. Any further testimony? Would the applicant please come forward and address, I know Ms. Milam had a specific question, and any responses to the testimony?
Couple of things that John said. He did say that I would be willing to help mitigate the traffic issues, which I did say. I did not give him assurance that I could do things that ACHD would not allow, to answer your question, Mr. Burton. Dan has told me that seventy, ACHD wants a 70% neighborhood approval if they pay for it. They're more lenient on that number if they have the residents approve it. It just comes down to whose house do you put it in front of, and then you have the fire department that you're willing to deal with. But I did tell them that I would put up signs, I would do whatever I could that was legal. We wanted to make that very clear. But the other thing that, that I wanted to address Ms. Garcia's concerns, as you saw in the, in the study that I showed you last month that I provided excerpts from, we're at the precipice where we could substantially be underdeveloped. But also going back to your code, it states in the Housing in Chapter Three that the opportunities for housing should be available for all income groups with a mix of housing, including modular, ranch ads, townhomes, apartments, low-income and mansions. A vibrant community needs a cross-section of housing and therefore must guard against an abundance of subdivisions in light density and price range. High-density housing must be strategically located to public transportation, community services. That is what we're doing here. That is why we have chosen this particular location, because the improvements to the, to the roadways around it have already been done. It's across the street from the parks. Those are some of the things that, that we have looked at when we've selected the site. Plus, it's also identified in your comp plan that I get that you guys are getting ready to update. It's about time, because your old comp plan says it's only good for 10 to 15 years. But the reality is that your comp plan designates this as a high-density area. That's what it's designated for. That's what the city has designed the roads around with ACHD. That's what the, the rest of, the, everything that goes into that has been done so that that is brought on to meet the comp plan. And so, you know, I think that with that, I can, I can stand for any further questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
So, the, the staff report recites some of the history in the area of this being mixed-use community, which is more than just high-density residential necessarily. And it talks about the property to the west previously approved and some of the basis for approving that in the TNR. As multifamily was that the overall area, your property in particular, might be able to fill the other components of mixed-use community, perhaps some of the commercial or office needs as part of what the comp plan contemplates. But this is now going towards the residential-only component. Is there some validity to the argument that the, the region as a whole is losing the true mixture that's intended by the mixed-use community if this is approved as presented?
Counselmember Burton, what your, if you look to the north side of the street, you see that the CNN is part of that mixed-use. It has the gas station there, it has office. Also, if you look to the northwest corner, that is designated and already platted as office and has been for sale now for going on 12 years, plus or minus a few, but that is for sale now currently as office and has yet to find a first user, let alone multiple users. And so, in staying with, I guess, north side versus south side, we have looked at that and said, well, what's been proven in that area is the gas station is successful. In fact, they expanded it into, and remodeled that little shopping center there and moved that. The office space is done fine, but as far as bringing in new office space, that hasn't been necessary, and no one has offered to buy the pieces of land in the CC piece on the northwest. And so, when we initially looked at that, we'd looked at doing some office in the front of this, we just, because this piece is small enough that it doesn't allow for a complete mix of uses on it in itself, there's the CC zone, and then there's four other property owners to the, to the east of that. So that's why we looked at the residential component, looking at the whole area designated as mixed-use and having the other components of that across the street. So if you look at, Josh, I don't know if you have that, where it shows the, the picture in the comp plan that designates this whole area as a mixed-use area, but equally on the north side as the south side. Since the south side, or since the north side got no residential, we felt it was our duty as northsiders, as we now call ourselves, to pick up the, the flag and carry that.
Any, any?
There's one more, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
There was a comment by staff at the opening that, that spoke to the traffic impact study, which will be addressed at the CCC stage. When it goes to ACHD, they formally review it at that stage. Walk, and maybe the question goes to Josh, but, but I'll pose it to you. What's the, the mechanics of that, where, is there a point in the future where if ACHD reviews this, has its conditions of approval perhaps, and you take those, whether you like it or not? Because it doesn't come back before us necessarily, so.
Counselmember Burton, I would prefer to have Josh give it a hack first.
And the reason I ask it is we're not addressing those types of conditions here.
And I know that ACHD looked at it, and they looked at the traffic study and said that will suffice because they required it. It wasn't, that was the, the little bit of trouble we had last time at our last hearing, was we brought that information to you in our original packet. ACHD processed it, processed it, said we have no issue with that, but then didn't forward the packet to council or to planning and zoning. So Josh had no record of it, but he saw that ACHD and said, yeah, we don't have any real issues with it. And that was kind of all they said. But their procedures, I don't know.
As I, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as I said at the beginning of my presentation, yeah, it's a little bit strange. Typically, multifamily is a conditional use permit, and we typically get a staff report right away from the highway district. There's no actual, I mean, this is an annexation, and they're actually proposing development, even though they're proposing development. It's a little bit strange. And so, the, the normal way isn't, isn't what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to follow up pretty closely with the highway district right away to make sure that we get comments from them and a staff report indicating whether or not they're in favor of the way they've got the project laid out. Did that, did that answer your question?
Not really. So I'll ask it a different way. There's not any comment from ACHD in the packet which expresses acceptance, let alone any conditions of the March 1st traffic impact.
Correct, there is not. Just a comment from one of the planner indicating that they're not generally in favor of where some of their entrances are located. But beyond that, that's all the information that I have. I did not receive anything from them indicating that they were in favor of or against the traffic impact study that was received on the 26th of November. But as the applicant said, that, their project has changed somewhat since that traffic impact study was, was given, but the likelihood that the, the vehicle trips is reduced is, is, is high because the number of units has gone down significantly.
So, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton, I do see that Justin is here, and it would be interesting to, to maybe pose this question to him. I, I think what Mr. Burton is, is getting to is it's hard to adopt findings without the, the findings from ACHD, because we are the, our findings are really what enforces ACHD's findings. So, Justin, if you can join us, we would appreciate your enlightenment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, my name is Justin Lucas. I represent the Ada County Highway District. Business address is 3775 Adam Street in Garden City, Idaho. Just a few comments, hopefully to clarify some of the questions I've heard. First, I'll go with the easy one. We are planning to widen Meridian Road between Cherry Lane and Eustick in fiscal year 2020. So that is, that is imminent, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year. This fiscal year, as you're aware, we're widening Linder Road between, well, I guess out there, it's between Eustick and all the way to Chindon. There's that one section that we're going to widen up by Chindon. So that's, hopefully, an answer to that question. When it comes to the application, this is a little different. What's before you tonight is a request for annexation and zoning. And for these types of applications, ACHD is unable to provide a series of conditions like you're normally see, due to the fact that all we have received is a conceptual plan. We're not actually, ACHD is only responding to the, the question of zoning, and you get these, you get a letter from us basically saying it appears to be consistent and we'll let you know our conditions at the next level. Typically, that's a conditional use permit or some other development application. Now, your staff will have to jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in the TNR zoning district, I believe multifamily residential is a principally permitted use. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, in this instance, when you're, you're allowing for a zoning designation, designation where multifamily is a principally permitted use, ACHD, the only other application we will review is a certificate of zoning compliance. And then we will provide our conditions to your staff at the, at the certificate of zoning compliance phase. And all, and, and the applicant's required to meet our, our conditions at that phase related to access and all of the other requirements we have, including traffic impacts. If there's a, some type of trigger for signalization or something like that, which I'm not saying there is on this application, all of that would be reviewed for the certificate of zoning compliance. It's a little atypical because you're used to seeing those things, because we provide them, but in this case, because of the zoning designation that you have chosen or could potentially choose for this site, it's, it's atypical. The process is a little different. But that's because we're not able to provide those until we have a development application submitted to us where we can actually provide those conditions. And annexation and zoning, we're not able to do that. But, that being said, it's not irregular for the city to require at annexation and zoning that the applicant comply with all of ACHD's conditions that will be applied in the future. That is relatively common.
And then they just proceed at their own risk that they'll like your conditions?
That, that is correct. And our conditions, as you know, separate, special-purpose government, it's possible that there would be a public hearing related to traffic issues at ACHD that can be triggered by a certificate of zoning compliance. That's certainly possible. If staff receives enough pushback or concern on the issue, that can happen, where we can have our, our commission act at a public hearing to do that. I'm not saying that's going to happen here, but that is, that is a possibility.
Any follow-up, Mr. Burton? Is, is this scheduled also for signalization at some point?
Yeah.
I assume that.
That's another great question, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, I noticed there was a comment about signalizing. I'm not sure of the name of that street, but I believe it's the entrance to the, is it Crossfield subdivision? I can't remember the name of that subdivision.
One of the several.
Yeah. Well, I'm, no, Venable, what I'm getting at is, Venable is the location where there'll be some type of future control. I believe our master street map shows a roundabout there as a potential for control. I'm not sure exactly how that'll play out, but either a roundabout or a signal would be the control at some point in the future. Whether this application triggers that or not, I don't know. Our, our staff would go through the traffic study when they have a chance to review it and, and do that analysis.
Any other questions for Justin, why he's here? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
That's a good answer.
Mr. Robnett, any, any further comment?
I do also want to make another comment that we are going to be required to do a preliminary and final plat on this project, which would also allow ACHD a chance to comment on that. So there'll actually be two times that ACHD would be commenting on that. We would just do that simultaneously with the certificate of zoning compliance. So, thank you.
Okay, counsel, this is yours to discuss.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Ask another question of Josh on the, the proposed amendments to the conditions of approval. There's a staff report of April 20. Is that the most recent one?
Correct.
Okay. There's nothing other than that?
That's the, Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Burton, that was the, as I said, this project started back in October, right? And it came to council first in April. So that's the most recent staff report.
Okay.
Remember, this was continued from May until about November of this year.
So, Josh, there was no update once that you got a new layout, because that would be part of a preliminary plat?
So, are you asking me, Madam Mayor, that?
Any update to the staff comments?
No. No, we will update the findings this evening, after this evening's hearing, so that can be presented, but based on your, based on your decision this evening, and we'll update the exhibits and things in the staff report. As Councilmember Burton alluded to, it's from April, and we did not include in that, in the staff report, the new, the new exhibits, anticipating that there might be some changes from, from council. That answer your question, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Kind of along the same lines, I guess, just because this is different than what we, that we do a lot of times with these apartments, since there's, we're just doing a zoning and there's no CUP or plat, that nothing can change based on the, the plan or the number of, of units that we're discussing today.
You can add, I believe there's a development of your meaning, you can, you can tie them to these concept plans, and that's, I think that's the goal, is to make sure that they're tied to the concept plan they're proposing this evening. And so, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow them to, to increase the number of units or anything, and they're tied to the amenities package and things that they're proposing. I will say, the only thing that's going to impact the applicant that come forward with the CCC is it will just take longer, because we'll have to wait for comments from, from the highway district. So it's not going to be your five to seven business day turnaround on a project like this, because we're going to need to make sure we get all the comments that we don't, that we don't typically get in that much detail with the certificate of zoning compliance. We usually get them, as I said previously, with a conditional use permit. But it, it shouldn't be a, it shouldn't be something that we, we can't figure out.
Madam Mayor, one other question, because this, being that this entire south side of Eustick is now residential with the exception of this C2 property that's white, is that, what is that? And is that still county property? And is, do we have any applications on that? So the only way to, the only way to keep this mixed-use community is to put something other than houses right there.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Milam, this, this whole corner is designated as a neighborhood center, and so we include the whole corner as part of that mixed-use. And so, staff's finding was that we, we have a mixture of uses if you include the whole area. So we've got the CN on the northeast corner, the CC on the northwest corner, and we've got the residential, and there's several different types of residential as well. There's single-family and there's multifamily. And, and I believe to the east here, and this, this area, C2 is county, correct? That's the commercials, that's Blue Rider music there. And then this would be medium-density residential, or I should say, shouldn't be, it is designated that. And the assumption is that will be single-family homes, similar to what's developed to the south and to the east of that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Clarification, Josh, I, is, is your understanding that the applicant is?
Those conditions, if I remember correctly, are specifically related to the previous concept plan that was proposed, and they're no longer applicable.
Anything further from staff, the applicant, or the neighbors that are here this evening? Mr. Borton.
If there is none, I'll move we close the public hearing on H. 2017-0142.
Second?
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes? And I just, I apologize to Ms. Mylum and Mr. Kavner. I thought the conversation was still part of the public record. I, so, if I was rude, I apologize. We have a closed public hearing. Any discussion before a motion is entertained?
I just, I have a question. I don't know if it's been asked, and I don't know if it's, I guess it's a staff question. If this were a single-family residential subdivision R8, how many homes, roughly, with the minimum open space, do you think could fit?
That's a great question. I think if you look at the same block of land immediately to the south of this project, you'll get, I don't know exactly how many homes that is, but it looks like roughly the same size and the same number of homes. We can guess.
At least eighty.
Yeah, I mean, a fair number of homes.
Would it comply with the TNR zone?
Don't know that, Madam Mayor, don't know that they would, it could, for sure. If you look to the west of this project, there are lots, smaller lots in the TNR zone. So there's, in theory, they could do, you know, fairly small lots and still comply. The density would go down for sure, but there would still be a fair number. And as Caleb was mentioning to me, there, obviously with TNR, there are some specific requirements to develop within TNR alley load, the way that the subdivisions are designed, but that doesn't, shouldn't impact significantly the number of homes you could get in there.
Question for Josh. Josh, the testimony tonight talked a little bit about speed pillows, if that's the appropriate term. Conditioning that is part of approval, maybe that's a question for Mr. Neri, what that, how we can do that tonight. I guess I'm not familiar with the mechanism that, on annexation, that we can condition speed pillows in another part of land that the owner doesn't own, or at least to attempt to work with the neighbors, get something installed.
Councilman Kavner, I guess Mr. Neri can jump in too. Typically, we, I don't know how we, if ACHD says that they can't do that, it becomes difficult for them to work with the project. If we're requiring them to do it, and ACHD says no, it kind of puts us at odds with what they're doing. In the past, when situations like this arise, we encourage them the best we can to work with the highway district, to come up with a resolution to solve some of the concern that long straight roadways pose to existing residents when a new development comes in. But I don't know how we require that as part of our staff report.
I think in the past, we have made it part of the findings upon approval of Ada County Highway District, because it is, has been part of the public record, where the applicant said that if ACHD would approve it, that he would, he would work at the neighbors and install it. Mr. Neri?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, a couple things. Yeah, I would agree with what everything has been said. I think ACHD has specific policies on what they will allow and how they will allow it. There is a percentage of the people that live along that street that have to agree to it as well, because again, not everybody necessarily wants these on their street. What I guess I'm not clear on is what I heard Mr. Robinett said, is he was willing to do whatever he could do on his property to assist. I wasn't sure that he was offering to pay for that on the, in the street. But again, that's up to them. But as the mayor stated, what we've done is simply direct that they follow the ACHD's procedure, work with the neighbors to provide that, and then work through that. And that could be certainly language in the development agreement.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kavner?
One more question for Mr. Neri. Recognize that the public hearing's closed, but at least I saw the applicant nodding in agreement and willingness to be able to do that. I don't want to reopen the public hearing, but I assume that we're okay to at least, if that's the direction council wants to head, and that would be in the final conditions, and if for whatever reason the applicant was opposed, then he would have the opportunity upon final approval to come back before us?
Yes.
Great. Excellent. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I mean, even in the late eighties, nineties, when these homes were built, it was an inevitability that the road was going to connect to Eustick. I don't believe that's ever been in question. And the fact that it's going to happen now, I'd have a really hard, I mean, by all means, head nodding and willingness to do it, and encouragement from us, but I'd hate to put anything in any kind of requirement, even if it were to be approved, that it be provided onsite or offsite, given that that road was going to connect, especially offsite. I mean, again, willing to do it, awesome, assuming ACHD goes for it and the neighbors go for it, but it was going to connect whether it was 2018, or 2008, or 1998. So to say, if it gets approved, you got to do it, I think is beyond what we're, I guess goes beyond the power that we're really endowed with up here to, which is that kind of thing.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kavner?
Mr. Palmer, appreciate your perspective. I think that, at the same time, we are trusted from the public to make sure that we don't create undue burdens to our current citizens as a result of growth. And I think that minimizing cut-through traffic, Councilman Mylum hit the nail on the head, you can never eliminate cut-through traffic. Go to any neighborhood, anywhere in Meridian, if it touches a major thoroughfare, there is cut-through traffic of some kind or another. When you look at those long, straight roads, those invite cut-through traffic. And I think we owe it to our current citizens to protect them and their kids. And speed pillows are the, I think, an appropriate mechanism, along with potentially signage, to be able to do that. Signs are great, but speed bumps or speed pillows, I think, are more appropriate. And so, I mean, Madam Mayor, I am, I was not very supportive of this application when it came before us. I think in part because I had some real concerns, like many of us did, about the impact, again, that negative impact on our schools, and hearing compelling testimony that, you know, young people are being bused to schools far, far away to be able to get their education. Well, that was my case when I was a kid going to Joplin Elementary, seven miles away from my home. But we've grown as a community, and closed schools are a part of that. I think the applicant's done a good job of going back to the drawing board, improving this project tremendously. And to me, it's just a finite detail of addressing some of the traffic concerns in and around that neighborhood. So, to me, I think the speed pillows, or at least we've got willing neighbors who are happy to help partner with developmentists. This is what's great about Meridian, neighbors being neighbors, working together. If the neighborhood supports it, sounds like we've got a developer who's willing to facilitate the cost and implementation. If the neighbors aren't, or the highway district is opposed, it's no longer an issue. The developer did everything he could. But to me, some type of speed control is necessary and warranted in this particular project, in my opinion.
Any other comments, or do I have a motion? Mr. Palmer?
So, in the motion, do we need to say anything about a development agreement?
It's a condition.
So, that's covered. Okay, I'm going to miss that one. I move we approve H. 2017-0142 with present conditions presented by staff.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, and discussion.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kavner?
Just because it was our previous topic of conversation, does the maker of the motion in a second intend to incorporate, I guess, my soapbox statement about speed control and parking pillows?
Madam Mayor?
I feel like that's a bingo card.
Mr. Palmer?
I'm going to try to get it approved without it first, given that we do have someone willing to do it, and hopefully, you know, if it can be allowed, it does happen. I just really don't want to set a precedent that if you're the last one to make the connection, you have, your responsibility, you're responsible to ensure that anyone else using any roads attached to it does it at a proper speed. I think willingness is great, but it shouldn't be someone's responsibility to make sure that half a mile down the road and around a corner, someone is deterred from cutting through because they put a speed bump partway down the road.
I guess I would just add, you noted, this is where the long length of the road is, is an older subdivision. We've learned things along the way, and I think our code has changed, that you're not going to see that long road in newer subdivisions. And the reason is, is because they do become a speedway. And so, I agree with your statement that that last person to make the connection, but the newer subdivisions do have an opportunity to mitigate for some of these older ones that did create a racing track. And so, that, I can understand the concerns.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I totally get that. I don't know the street lighting situation along Indian Rocks. I imagine in a newer subdivision, we're going to require more street lighting than may have been required at the time that that was built. Now that there's going to be a connection, there may be more people that want to get over to Garbanzo's Pizza, instead of going north, walking all the way up Meridian Road, going down Eustick, they might realize they can get there quicker. Is it the responsibility of the new developer that makes the connection to also ensure that there's adequate lighting for pedestrian traffic at night? Should we require them to put in additional streetlights to make sure that that's taken care of as well? It's an older subdivision, it was approved then, we've learned things for sure, but it's not the responsibility of the new guy to make up for what council's learned since.
Any other discussion on this motion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Just briefly, I had expressed some comments before, and about how I support so many of the changes. I think the applicant did a good job in trying to address initial concerns, at least that I had, with regards to the density and the scaling of this property. You know, the reality remains that it's a mixed-use community, with neighborhood center contemplated in this area, both north and south of Eustick. And this really fits what was intended and what we all knew, to a certain degree, was going to be here, or at least within the four corners of Venable and Eustick. So, I think the new design fits that much better. I think it addresses the concerns, I think it meets in the middle. Councilman Kavner's comments with regards to the hello idea, I don't think sets a precedent in this context. I think it sounded like, and I'd be supportive of it, because it's really trying to set a condition that facilitates the collective agreement of the parties. The applicant is aware of the concern, the public's raised a concern, we've got a means to utilize this process to address it. I think everyone's trying to solve that the same way. So, in this context, it makes sense to include as a condition. I would probably vote against the motion, just to make sure that condition gets included. It's an opportunity that we all have to make this project a little more successful. So, I'm supportive of the project, but would like to have what council has discussed as an opportunity be addressed as part of it.
Ms. Little Roberts?
Madam Mayor, I think Councilman Borton iterated that very well. I'm not in generally in favor of designating what we do with the roads, but I think in this case, because it is an older neighborhood, I have lived in an older neighborhood where we don't have the opportunity for, haven't had for speed pillows, and I think that it would greatly benefit the neighborhood in this case, to do what we can to mitigate the potential issues with safety as we move forward.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I can do simple math, so now that I've lost the vote on that, I would like to amend my motion to include that provision and move on.
Okay.
The second agrees.
The second agree?
Second agrees.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, the three conditions of approval that are being removed from the December 4 staff report are also part of the motion. Otherwise, the staff report conditions, which include a development agreement requirement, are all part of it.
Certainly.
Okay. Any further discussion, clarification? Sir Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, Mr. Palmer's motion passes unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing for H. 2018-0109. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
The next application before you is a request for a rezone and a development agreement modification. This site consists of 3.53 acres of land, zoned LO, located at 3755 West Perugia Street. This property was annexed back in 2005 with the requirement of a development agreement, which was later amended. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation for this site is medium-high-density residential, which calls for a mix of relatively dense residential housing types at eight to 15 units per acre. The applicant is requesting a modification to the existing development agreement to remove the subject property from the agreement, and a rezone of 3.53 acres of land from the LO Limited Office to the R15 zoning district, for the development of an accessory self-service storage facility for use by the existing multifamily residential development to the north, Silver Oaks. A standalone storage facility for use by the general public is a prohibited use in the R15 district. Therefore, the applicant is only requesting an accessory storage. A conceptual development plan was submitted, as shown, that depicts a variety of different sizes of storage units. No outdoor storage is proposed. Access is provided via West Perugia Street. A secondary emergency access is proposed via North Umbria Hills Avenue along the east boundary. Landscape street buffers are proposed in accord with UDC standards. The Kennedy lateral runs along the west boundary of the site. The council previously approved a waiver to allow the lateral to remain open and not be piped. Staff is recommending a six-foot-tall wrought-iron fence is proposed, excuse me, provided, matching that to the north in the multifamily development to preserve public safety. north in the multifamily development to preserve public safety. Conceptual building elevations, perspectives of the proposed storage structures are as shown. Building materials consist of metal paneling, hardy paneling, and stone veneer. The Architectural Standards Manual prohibits metal paneling as a finished material. However, it can be used as an accent or a secondary field material. Elevations submitted with the certificate of zoning compliance should be in compliance with the Architectural Standards Manual. The commission did recommend approval of this application. Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, testified in favor, as did Heath Quist and Jesse Bennett. No one testified in opposition. Mike Green commented. No written testimony was received. And the main issue that was discussed was, they were in favor of the storage facility in close proximity to the apartments. Key issues of discussion by the commission was whether or not the applicant should be required to construct or contribute to the cost of construction of the crossing over the Kennedy lateral. Let's go back here to this map. Kennedy lateral, if you can look at the aerial here, just runs along this west boundary. And then, Perugia Street comes here and stubs. Actually, there's a cul-de-sac there. So, a bridge connection is needed here to the west. The other issue of discussion by the commission was the timeframe in which residents of the multifamily development can leave their items in the storage facility after they move out. The commission made the following changes to the staff recommendation. They made a motion to strike condition number 2E, which requiring a road trust to be submitted to ACHD for half the cost of construction of a bridge over the Kennedy lateral. Condition number 2B included allowance for existing renters to lease space for up to one year after they move out of the multifamily development. They included a requirement for the developer to work with the adjacent property owner to the west to come up with a cost-share agreement for construction of a bridge or a culvert over the Kennedy lateral prior to the city council hearing. Modification of condition B. 2 to allow the sewer and water easements to be submitted and reviewed, along with the development plan approval, rather than with the plat, since there is not a plat. And finally, modification to condition B. 3 to exclude the Kennedy lateral from the requirement for irrigation facilities to be piped, since a waiver was previously approved on this. An outstanding issue for council was the cost-share agreement with the adjacent property owner to the west for construction of the crossing over the Kennedy lateral. The commission directed the applicant to come up with an agreement with the adjacent property owner prior to the council hearing. The applicant has communicated to me that they did discuss the possibility of a cost-share agreement with the adjacent property owner to the west. And that owner is fine with not requiring the applicant to participate in a cost-share agreement for the crossing. That owner plans to construct the crossing in its entirety at their own cost with development of their site. Written testimony since the commission hearing was received from James Doolan, Land Development Partners. He is representing the property owner to the west, and he did decline a cost-share agreement for construction of the crossing over the Kennedy lateral. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions for staff at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, sorry, getting late. 1029 North Rosario, Meridian Business Address. Sonia, do you have mine queued up?
I'm sorry, Becky, I didn't know you had one. Give me a minute here. You always have one, I should have.
I got here early.
All right, is it that one?
Yep.
Oh, you're driving. Okay, I can't drive while you're driving.
Okay, there we go. Whoops.
Would you like me to put it on the PowerPoint view?
There we go.
Thank you, members of the council, representing 10 Mile Development LLC. We've been working with Gray Wolf on this particular project for many years now. It was initially a project that got caught up in the Great Recession. It was partially constructed. The site was a mess. It was intended to be fourplexes. And we spent quite a few years trying to revamp the site, get new entitlements. And we finally got a project that was economically viable. And we appreciate the council's cooperation and the staff's willingness to work with us over the past few years to make it happen. And I'd like to say that we just finished and got all the occupancies on our third and final phase. So, we have one thing that was remaining out at the site, and that was this initial office lot. Where'd my cursor go? There we go. So, when this was platted as Umbria subdivision, and the multifamily R15 area to the north, and then this triangular area was platted as LO, and it was one single office lot. All utilities were provided to this lot. The lot was platted, and it's been vacant for 13 years. Mr. Wolf had multiple architects, multiple commercial real estate people evaluate the lot, look at the lot. We kicked around different ideas, like daycare, office. And after many years of attempting to find a use for it, they decided, you know, we've come to the realization that we need storage for our 369 units. And we are seeing a significant number of residents, approximately 65% of their residents are moving here from out of state. They have personal possessions that obviously can't be stored within an apartment. And they have 98 garages onsite as part of the multifamily development. And they kinda did an inventory here just recently, and determined that 65% of those garages are being used to store personal items and not vehicles. Obviously, it creates parking issues and a shortage of parking. So, in meeting with the staff, I'd never done it before as an accessory use. So, we're kinda paving new ground here, as you would say. But we're asking to change the zoning to, from LO to R15, and that this would be an accessory use to our principal permitted use, which is the Silver Oaks or Franklin at 10 Mile multifamily development. As you can see, there's this triangular property to the west, this designated high-density residential. There's an application moving through the process toward you guys as a multifamily-type project that's been downsized from what was initially denied, I think, last year. To the southeast, we have high-density multifamily designation here. Within the Bariah, there's an R40 zone. The residents are indicating to the managers that all of the mini-storage, here's an existing mini-storage facility right here along 10 Mile, that everything's in full in Meridian, and that you'll have to get on a waiting list. And so, they went to Babcock Design and worked with them over the past, probably about eight months, to come up with what was considered a good design. These are five-by-five units and 10-by-20 units in size. One of the things that the staff talked about was obviously retaining that character that is talked about within the 10 Mile area-specific plan along the Franklin Road corridor. They asked us, you know, if you wanna do storage, we'd like you to have it, one, take access internally. Secondly, have a nice aesthetic appeal along Franklin Road with significant landscaping, articulation of the buildings. This kinda shows you the landscape plan here. So, we have a significant landscape setback. As Sonia indicated, the Kennedy lateral traverses our western boundary here. We do have a waiver for that to be open. This is Umbria, which is a collector, feeds the 10 Mile Christian Church and the apartment complex. Our access will be here internally off of Umbria. We will have an emergency vehicle access out to, I mean, I'm sorry, Perugia. We'll have an emergency vehicle access on Umbria only, and no direct lot access to Franklin. This kinda shows you, you can see the apartments. This is just the edge of the site in question. Here, you can see that the site has basically been vacant for the past 13 years. And kind of, they used it for staging and stuff for the apartment complex. One of the things that the architects did was give you this nice perspective, shows you the elevation, and they're kinda creating like these little monument towers here at the corners. Everything is enclosed. We don't have any exterior outdoor parking. But you can see how they've created this articulation with the building rough lines and the exterior walls and mix of materials, textures, and colors. This right here is the Franklin frontage. So, you can see, we have a nice curb appeal to Franklin Road, which is a major five-lane arterial roadway. And then, we also retain that nice landscape and aesthetic look along the entrance road of, I always forget its name, Umbria. And then, you can see how, this is the entrance to the mini-storage right here, which is off of Perugia. Staff asked me when, prior to submitting this, they said, you know, we want you to take a look at the 10 Mile area-specific plan, and we want you to obviously provide the council justification for how this fits in, into that area. Because there really isn't a lot of discussion about mini-storage in the 10 Mile specific area plan. And the plan talks about proposed, you know, storage adjacent and accessory uses that will complement primary uses within that plan. And it said that it encourages mixes of uses which are complementary to the existing uses, and highlighting the diversity of building forms, neighborhoods serving retail and service uses. And in reviewing that 10 Mile specific plan, I think this accessory use meets that test of integration, and also providing multiple income-producing uses, as outlined in the plan. One of the things that we also looked at were the conditions. And I think one of them, the staff has indicated, has kinda resolved itself, and that was the condition to share in the cost of, let me get back here, share in the cost of the, how come it's not one? There it goes. This is a stub street right here. And initially, there was a trust fund by the original developer. Money was set aside at Ada County Highway District to pay for their proportionate share of putting a culvert in here, so this public street could extend and connect to the property to the west. ACHD, under their policy manual, says that if those monies have not been utilized within 10 years, they have to give them back. So, they gave the money back to the original developer that couldn't economically make this project happen. And Mr. Wolf had to come in and step in and take it, take the project back at a significant cost to him. So, when the Highway District reviewed this application, initially, they said, well, the money's not there, so we'll need you to put $14,000 back into the trust fund. But then, they said, no, we don't think we're gonna require that, because we gave the money back, and it's kinda taking a second shot at ya. And so, they said, we're going to exclude that condition from our staff report. And I did send the staff their comments. So, the commission said, well, you know, you guys share that Kennedy lateral goes to, you know, the center line there. So, could you go to that developer, talk to them, see if you can come up with an agreement? So, we contacted Mr. Doolan, and Mr. Doolan said, I really don't have any interest in cost-sharing, you know, as far as we're concerned. We've budgeted for that interconnectivity of that public street. And so, therefore, we don't have any requests or requirements of you. And so, basically, we've met our requirement, as far as making that effort to work with that adjoining developer. The condition that we feel is problematic, we've met and consulted with our legal advice and is item A-2B, and the way it's written, A-2B says, "This storage facility is allowed to operate in conjunction with and as an accessory use to the multifamily development to the north, i.e. Silver Oaks, and shall only provide storage service for residents of the multifamily development. Providing storage service for non-residents, i.e. the general public, is prohibited." And then, the commission added, "Existing renters can lease space for up to one year after they move out of the multifamily development." Well, we're gonna have other multifamily developments kitty-corner to us. So, we started thinking about, what are the implications of this condition? What are the implications of this condition when we go to get financing? This is a $3 million project. It's a significant investment. And how do we tell the people across the street that say, oh, great, can we put our stuff in your storage facility? And if we're only 75% filled up, although we hope we fill up with the 369 dwelling units that we have in Silver Oaks, what if we're at 75? And so, I know the intent of the accessory use, and I looked at the definition of accessory use, and it really didn't provide me a lot of guidance. It said, "This use is incidental and subordinate to the principal use, and is conducted upon the same property." So, this is conducted within the Umbria development, which was Silver Oaks. It is incidental, it is subordinate to my principal permitted use. But it doesn't say anything about that I have to turn someone away if they want, if they're next door and they wanna put something in the storage unit. And Mr. Wolf wants to kinda talk to the council about that, because, you know, it's obviously his dollars that are being invested. He's the one that's been meeting with his bankers and his attorneys. And how do we reconcile that without creating a financing issue or a legal issue? So, great.
Thank you, Becky. Madam Mayor, even though she's not here, members of the council, thanks for hearing us out. First of all, if you're not-
Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead and state your name and-
I'm sorry, Gray Wolf, 10 Mile Development, business address is 1409 North Main Street, Meridian.
Thank you.
83642. On October 19th, we finished Phase 3. And 12 and a half years later, I mean, we appreciate all the stuff you guys have done to help us get this far. To start with, Becky did a great job capsulizing what she said. But just, there are a few statistics that I think you guys will be interested in hearing, that I didn't know until I got in the multifamily business. Out of 368 units out there, about, I would say, almost 70%, 60% of those units are three-bedroom, two-bedroom or three-bedrooms. The amazing statistic to me was that, of the people living there, we offer covered parking. And the fire chief, when we had our first meeting, had mentioned the problem we were having with parking. Every single person gets one covered parking stall. And in the residence, we have 368 units. Every resident will have about 1.89 cars, based on the mix. If they have guests there, they'll have about 42 extra cars there. So, overall, there'll be 736 cars in that development, which is two cars per unit in that vicinity. So, I guess the first thing I'm saying is, the need is there. These people gotta have someplace to park their car. So, what they're doing is they're parking on the streets, they're parking in handicap spots. So, it's created some problems as we built this for the city. And so, we've had to have parking enforcement booting the cars, et cetera. So, the need is there to have some places for people to park. What's happened, and what Becky said, is 60, almost 68%- What's happened, and what Becky said, is sixty, almost sixty-eight percent of these units that we've rented is garages. There's ninety-five of them. Almost sixty-five percent of those are now rented as garages and they're not being used as garages, they're being used for storage. So there's definitely a need there. As you look at this, I believe that we'll be able to, with the units that are in the storage units, uh, the number of units, there's about four-hundred. That most of those will be filled by residents. But what Becky is saying is, there's a couple different things that are gonna be awfully hard for us to enforce. If, if, as these people move in, and this is a statistic that we got from our property manager, so far at Silver Oaks, Franklin's, the Franklin, so far, the complex has experienced seventy-five to eighty percent annualized turnover, which amazes me. So seventy-five per eight, eighty percent of these three-hundred-and-sixty-eight units are turning over every single year. So you can imagine the number of people moving in and out. One of the first things they ask us when they move there, in the site, if you're looking at the, at the, at the site, the site to the north where the storage units are right now. I developed that and sold it to store it. It's been full for some time. So the first question a resident will ask us, excuse me, is, where's the nearest-
Mr. Wolf, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time has expired. If council wants to extend that, that, that's great. But I'm sorry I walked in on the tail end of your-
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think Ms. McKay was introducing the application. To me, this feels a little bit like public testimony, he ended up using some of Ms. McKay's time. I'm comfortable with, with giving Mr. Wolf three additional minutes to be able to surmise his testimony. Uh, perhaps could also encapsulate his comments at the end as well.
Mr. Clerk.
Good.
Thank you.
I'll wrap it up, thank you. So where I was going with this is, these people, if they move out, and they're moving out as frequently as they are. The issue that we have as operators of the storage units is policing that and trying to rent a unit to someone who is moving into the apartments. And saying, okay, you're gonna rent this, you may not know when your house is gonna be completed, but you've got twelve months before you gotta get your stuff out. Pretty unrealistic, especially if you're working with contractors in this building environment. You, the requirement of saying you only have a year to leave your stuff here prohibits us from being able to do this, number one. Number two, turning down people, if we have residents that need space from another unit, or someone wants to use it when there's no space in Meridian, is somewhat problematic as a businessperson. How do you tell somebody, we can't rent to you because you don't live in this apartment complex? So there's, understanding that this, this, this amenity use, we're one of the first people to go up with this. We wanna work with it and we want this thing to be an amenity of the apartment complex. But as a businessperson, it's awfully hard to do that and regulate it. And force people if they have no place to put their stuff in their houses and then you have to get out. So I don't, I don't know how we would work with something like that. We've gone to the extra cost to make sure it looks nice, uh, we've been a good neighbor with the church next door, we've helped with a, a walking path. The development is fantastic, we're very proud of it. And I think this is a nice amenity, the building materials we're using match the apartments. So it looks, and it's, it's a good aesthetic uh, addition to the apartments. But we're struggling with the requirement that we cannot, if we don't fill it with the people at the apartment complex, how we can work within that rule to force them out or not rent to someone who may want to rent a unit. And that's our biggest issue. So we appreciate your, you know, consideration of it, we think it's a great project. It'll complete the development that's been a challenge for all of us. But we think it's gonna be a very, very nice addition to the apartment complex and to the community. So, okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Wolf, yes.
Sorry.
Ms. Mylum.
I wanted to catch her before he sat down.
Okay.
First of all, I, I think this is a fantastic idea. So in, in, in general, I, I think it's a, it's a great addition to the apartment complex. And um, I, as a businessperson, I completely understand what you're saying about um, not being able to rent to other outside sources that are not at the apartment complex. But on the other hand, if, all other storage units in the area are full. So you could easily be full with nobody from the apartment complex living there and not fixing your parking problem and, and not really doing anything that this is designed to do. So I don't know if you've thought about like a percentage, or I mean, what are, what are you thinking? Cause we, we have to come up with something that works for you and the development itself.
Uh, it's a good, very good question. I think when you look at it, what we're planning on doing with the apartment complex, it's a, it's a huge advantage to have the amenity. And offering the residents, when they move in, a storage unit in their monthly rental, to, to encourage them to rent there. I don't know if we can, we can tie it to a percentage. But I will tell you that our, our marketing plan at the apartments is to use this strongly as an incentive to get people to live there. With all the multifamilies coming on the market, this is a distinct advantage for us. So I think, if you wanna say a percentage, I think a minimum of fifty percent of the people that'll live here will be renting. Uh, there's no way for me to know for sure because of the constant move in and move out. And then once they move in, any of us that have storage units, once you pretty much have one, you have it. Cause you have no place else to put your stuff, right? I mean, I've got one myself. So I don't know how much longer those people would leave their stuff. But I, I think there's a very safe percentage of fifty percent, that when they move in, they're gonna, they're gonna want that. That's one of the first questions they ask. So it's hard for me to get tied to a percentage. But I believe it's gonna be fifty percent or around that number that we could pretty much say, they're gonna, they're gonna be there and they're gonna want that space.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
My, my, my concern also is aligned with Ms. Ms. Mylums as well. Because I feel like if you're going to offer these units to other um, folks who have, um, who are renting nearby. I think you might be in a position where they're gonna be full. And then when you offer these units to your own customers, you might be put in a situation where you have no room to offer anything to them. So I, I, I would be in favor of, and also being a business owner, I understand your concern, it ma- totally makes sense. But I think the only way that this makes sense, if this is your business model, that there has to be a percentage.
Okay. Two things I want you to consider. This will be owned by a separate entity and a separate ownership group, even though it's, I'm part of, I'll be part of both of those groups. Part of the issue with that is it definitely affects, on the negative side, the marketability of this piece of property. If the apartment should ever sell to someone else and this apartment complex is there. So what you're pretty much saying is, if you're gonna do this, the only way this will work is if the same, same group owns, owns both of them. That, that's not possible and it's gonna affect the market value of what that storage unit complex would be worth if you ever wanna sell it. So I, I buy your argument, if I could guarantee a hundred percent of them, that's what I'd want. But if anything ever changes, multifamily changes, rental rates go down, the apartments aren't viable, and we decide to sell the apartments. Then this, then the, the part, the uh, storage complex becomes sale-proof, number one. Number two, if you look at the, the size of the site, one of the problems with the site is there's no access off of Franklin, which is okay. But the design of the site, laying, laying office buildings, a daycare, dentist office, the things we've tried to put on that. It's so difficult to put something on that piece of property and not have at least half of it wasted, just due to the layout. And Becky Babcock, I've worked with other people trying to do it. It's a very difficult piece of property to put something on. So this is, this was the best use we could come up with based on what the, what the property looked like. So I, I wanna, I want, again, we wanna work with you, but there's no way, there's no way, if we're tied to not being able to do anything outside. In my opinion, it, it negatively impacts the value of that property. If we're tied to a percentage where I cannot sell it to somebody else at some point, or if the apartments close. You can't buy the apartment complex unless you buy the storage units, that's problematic.
Madam Mayor, follow-up please. Madam Mayor, Mr. Wolf, I, I completely get what you're saying, but just sell it for what it is, in my opinion, you know? I mean, if, if you're wanting these to be storage units, then just sell them. Sell the idea to us as storage units as opposed to, these are, this is going to be an amenity to the current apartment complex that you are a part-owner in. I mean, just sell, tell me what, I mean, if, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck.
I agree.
So in, in this case, if, if it's just gonna be a storage facility, just sell it as that instead of sort of sugarcoat it and make it sound a little bit better than it is.
Uh, Councilman Byrd, I agree a hundred percent. I would like to do that, but we're dealing with the ten-mile comprehensive plan and the staff report and trying to comply with the amenity. If we didn't have to, I'd be here in front of you saying, wanna build a storage unit complex? I don't wanna use the nice materials we're gonna use on it, I don't want it to look like the apartments. I wanna build it just like the one I built that's behind it, that looks like a typical storage unit complex. That's what I'd be here doing. So trying to work with all of it. All we're asking for is to have you just work with us on some kind of an arrangement where we're not tied exclusively to renting to just the apartment people. And, and I don't know how we come up with a percentage, I mean, I don't, I already don't know.
I get that.
Okay.
I don't know how we'd enforce it.
Right.
Well, we, we-
That would be fun.
It would be hard for both of us, I think. You know, this is the thing, you're gonna move into the apartments, I'm building a house. And eighty percent of these people are moving in here from out of state, th- those are our residents. You're gonna come in here, you're building a home, I mean, we built the apartments and it took us, it went over by a year. A contractor says, we're gonna have your house done by August first. They move in August the year before, their house isn't done till October. Then they leave and they, and they can't, they can't move out on time. It's, it's, it's a problem. And I don't know how you evict somebody that's current on their rent and say, the city says you gotta get out.
Right.
You know, so we're working with this thing. I, I think, I, I believe, I, I believe we'll be able to fill it for the most part with our residents.
Right.
But you can't turn people away and I don't know how you kick them out. And that's what we're trying to work with this amenity thing, which, which you just mentioned. It's not that, I like to just come in here and say, I wanna build a storage unit complex. But I want it to work with the apartments, you know what I mean? Even if it wasn't an amenity requirement, we want it to be that way. So it, it's gonna be a nice thing, we just gotta somehow figure out how we can work through this. It has to be rented only to those residents.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Hi, I won. Given that this isn't going in the middle of a single-family residential subdivision, that it's right off of a major arterial at the, near the intersection of another major one and really close to a major freeway exit. This makes perfect sense to go right where it is the way that, that you're asking. So if we believe in the free market and we believe what's on the homepage of our website where it says, built for business and designed for living. Every portion of this situation fits into exactly what everybody's trying to accomplish. So the really, the only two questions we should be asking ourselves is, Mr. Nary, as an accessory use, can we justify this? And if not, can we change the code safely and promptly to not affect others but accomplish the purpose here?
So, Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilman Palmer, a couple things. And, and one, I guess I wanna clarify something that Mr. Wolf said. I, what I read is the condition was placed by planning and zoning is that the people could only use the storage one year after they moved out.
Right.
Not one year after they moved in.
Correct, right.
So they could be moved into another house and still have storage, using that storage unit. So I, I was unclear with your statement, but that's not what P and Z recommended. Secondarily, what's the problem here is your ten-mile area specific plan is what's driving the zoning that you wanted in this area when we created that. All residential districts, the storage units are accessory units in a residential zone. So that's why the staff requirement was that it has to be accessory to the use that's there, which is the apartment complex. If self-storage immediately to the north applied to put this here, the staff would've denied it. Because it's not allowed to have a zone here that's other than residential in this area, that's the problem. Your ten-mile plan already states what's there. So the property owner, Mr. Wolf, or anybody else knew, that's what the conditions were when you developed this property, is that's what's allowed there. So you can't change the code, the plan already is there that says, this is what's, the type of zone that you're granting. And that's what's allowed in the zone, it's only accessory uses. And that's what the accessory is to the adjacent property. That's the whole, that's the whole mix of the plan. So I don't know how you can change any of that. Your code only allows it as an accessory use in every residential zone, not just R fifteen. So I, I think the staff's recommendation is correct. There isn't a way around it, that's what your plan contemplated, was these types of uses in the ten-mile area.
Two quick things, just to mention it, there is a stoplight plan for Umbria, which is right on the corner. Because the traffic there, so it's the borderline between the church and the apartments and where the storage units are, there's a traffic light planned there. It's already approved going in. There on the twentieth, Du- Mr. Doolin's gonna be in front of you on the twentieth for the development to the west. And that's the development right next to the apartments. And the third thing is, this is a three-point-five-three-acre parcel. If I were gonna build storage units, the average one is about eight acres. So from the standpoint of building a storage unit complex on a three-point-five-three-acre parcel, not the best thing. So it's, it's a great use for right in front of the apartments, but it's not the greatest storage unit facility from the standpoint of a business investment. You'd want something bigger, you know, eight, eight, nine, ten acres. This, that's why they built it small, is to try to have it fit there. And, you know, again, we're grappling with this, cause it's an accessory use. I think we can market it that way, but there's no way for me to guarantee what the percentages are gonna be inside that use. Now, or what I'm really gonna do with the property, because it's really gonna have to be, to be one big business, you know? Because of the parking and the layout of the thing, or maybe two small ones. And the problem is marketing that to a, to a, for a business use, it's been a real issue for us to try to get somebody interested in that parcel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question actually for Sonia, the, and I'm asking you to kinda put on your Wayback Machine hat. When we had the storage facility before us at Spurwing, that came through as an accessory use as well. And I just, I don't, I don't recall that we limited the amount that could be sold to people who lived near Spurwing. I mean, we I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where we did this before, or Caleb, and, and maybe I'm, I'm wrong in my, in my recollection on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, uh, I could be wrong too, it hasn't been that long ago, but I don't recall specifically. What I think is different there is I don't think that was ancillary accessory use to Spurwing. That was a standalone in a commercial district. They requested CN zoning, if memory serves, for that, and it wasn't restricted to use here. And that's kinda the rub here, is the application says it's accessory to large multifamily project. Now we're hearing it's, well, maybe, but we reserve the right to sell it to others, which I get. But the zoning is R fifteen, and as, as Councilman Nary said, it's only ancillary in an R-zone. If you're gonna zone it to a residential district, it needs to be tied back to that, those properties where people are living directly. So back to Spurwing though, I believe that's a different scenario, and we do allow, not all storage units have to be ancillary. Like you guys said, call it, if it's gonna be open to the public, then zone it appropriately. Don't zone it residential, cause that's misleading to have it. And that's just, that's what we, Sonia evaluated, was the application that was submitted. And that's what was stated in, in the narrative, was this is ancillary to the apartment complex.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So to clarify, this, would, we'd have no issues if we just zoned it commercial?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mylum, so there are, the, the ten-mile specific area plan does convolute it a little bit there, and I see where they're going. But that's not what they applied for. We, we could do a, a map amendment and change that, but let's call it what it is, right? Let's not zone it something and, and tweak it, and then all of a sudden, you're left with a commercial complex in a residential zone. So it's not that simple, I wish it was. But there are some standards in the ten-mile specific area plan that have been talked about, that it makes it a little bit tougher for them to do this. Um, but that's why staff supported it, is because it was, again, directly tied to. But, but that said, I think, I, I see the need for this too, I mean, I, I see it. I think we can, to some, with their help, justify a commercial zone, if that's really what this should be. The underlying zoning, though, is my point, should match the land use that's happening.
Madam Mayor, I had a question for Mr. Wolf earlier. So you keep using an example of somebody's house, they move in in August and their house isn't done the following August. They need to leave their stuff there, but maybe for more than a year, where are these people going? If they're moving out, but their house isn't done, where are they going?
Well, no, they won't, excuse me, that's what Mr. Nary was saying. They move in, they move in, when they initially move in, they need a storage unit. When they move out, if, what, unless he, he's correct, when they move out, they have up to a year to leave their stuff there. If they don't have their stuff out in a year, we would have to kick them out. So when they move out, they may or may not move their stuff. They may wanna elect to keep it there, they may wanna keep an extra car there. There's, there's no way for us to really say in the beginning of the lease, you have to be out of here in a year if you're not, a year after you move out of the apartments. That's the first thing. Secondly, I think it's really problematic when they move in, to put that requirement on them when they move in. To say that even if you don't have a place to take your stuff, you've still gotta be out a year after you leave the apartments. That's, that's the problematic part of this whole thing, I think for us, is policing that, number one. Number two, how do you tell somebody who comes and wants to rent one, can't rent one, cause you don't, you don't live here?
Vin.
No. If the apartments are full, and they're, but, and the good news is, right now, they're all full. I mean, the apartments are gonna be full by the end of the year and will be full. If they're full, then that's problematic, so you discriminate or you have to turn somebody away. So it's, it's a hard thing to work with. We wanna figure out a way to work with the staff and work within the plan. It's just, we don't know how to do it. And so I, to- And so, I, to Mr., to Councilman Burns, if I could say for sure, limit it to fifty percent, that's okay. But then, what if it's not full? And the lender, you know, we've got a lender that's gonna loan money on the thing, and we have this condition put on us. That becomes problematic, when you go to the bank and they say, "Hey, if he might not be full, we're not gonna loan you the money."
Right.
So, that's a problem with the whole thing. So, it's, it's, you got all these different conundrums you're trying to get through. That's the issue.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor. It's true. Ms. Laura Roberts.
Sorry.
I'm just kidding. I'm just, that was so, that was a joke.
Madam Mayor, Gray, thank you for being here. Couple of questions. How many storage units are there in the facility?
Help me here. Four hundred and twelve.
Okay. And do you currently have any requirements or anything regarding people using their garages for storage? So that you can encourage them to get out of their garages into storage and park?
We don't. And the reason we don't is there is no available storage in Meridian for these people right now. Everybody's on a waiting list, and that's, that's the problem. We don't have a requirement. We need to make it a requirement. Once we have a solution for them, we would make it a requirement that they have to be used for automobiles. But we don't, because we have one, excuse me, one person moved in two weeks ago. They rented four garages, at a hundred and twenty-five dollars apiece. So, they have four of these garages tied up. One resident from California that rented a three-bedroom has four of them full of stuff. So, we, our plan is to require that, but you can't really require it when people say, "I, I'm not moving in unless I have a place to put my stuff." Does that make sense?
It does. Madam Mayor. Gray, is there a way that I, 'cause I totally understand the business aspect of it, and needing to be full, and how do you monitor all of it? Can you monitor it through marketing to your residents first, and then potentially just opening it up to the public for those that aren't occupied?
Yes, we can. And our plan is, working with, uh, working with the property management company we have that manages it, is including a storage unit in their rental lease, giving them discounts to encourage them to rent there. I don't, I don't think we're gonna have to twist their arms too much, because they don't have any place to go. But that would be the part that we'd wanna do. But understand that the Franklin is the name of the apartment complex. On the landscape plan, the Franklin is in front of that storage unit. So, when people pull in there, it looks like the storage unit is part of the apartment complex. That's the way it's been designed. So, it will be primarily for the residents. We're gonna make sure that those residents have a break to be able to use that facility first. And then, if the general public came after that, then they would come. But we'll, we're gonna, we're planning on marketing it to our people first, and making it part of the enticement to get them to rent there. If you look at all the apartment complexes that are going up in Meridian, we think that's a real hook and an edge for us to get them to move there, because anyplace else, it's full of Meridian. So, we think it's gonna be an advantage to rent more apartments. So, that's our plan, is to build this and use that as a marketing tool.
Thank you.
Mr. Burns.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just joking, by the way, previously. I love to give as much time to Ms. Roberts as she, as she needs. So, basically, Mr. Wolf, I, I, through further clarification, I completely get the, the issue that you have, and the, the problem that you're facing. It's almost, to me, in my opinion, you have two issues, you have two, you have two resolutions. Either you keep it as is, and, um, because we are under code, we have, I mean, as, as a city, that's what makes us organized, and that's how we are able to enforce the, the beautification and make sure that we're organized as a city and everyone's safe. And so, so either, either you build it as presented and choose whether or not you rent to outside individuals, or you come back and with a, with a, you know, proposed project where the zoning is different. So, this issue is not a problem anymore.
Okay.
And I, my, my fellow councilmembers may, might disagree with that, but, um, right now, those are the two. I mean, those, those are the two issues that you have.
To be, to be honest with you, because I do own, I mean, I'll be in ownership in both of them. I don't think, I, I wouldn't change the design any. I wouldn't change the way it looks any. I, I'd leave it exactly the same way it is, and I would market it the same way I would market it. I mean, it makes perfect sense. So, I, if I understand you, repeat your statement back to you. Come back in and request it to be rezoned something different, so we don't have the requirement. Is that?
I mean, that would be an option that we could, we, we certainly can discuss, but it would certainly make it so that you wouldn't be violating any code. You know, if, if you were wanting to keep it as is, but rented that out to individuals outside your complex.
Okay. Becky, do you have anything you wanna, you have questions or anything like that?
However, I thi, I think it is a little bit more complicated than that. I believe that Mr. Neri had said it would require a map amendment. It is, are the comprehensive plan. It's also part of the ten-mile area-specific plan that is, has its own set of design criteria, which Mr. Wolf addressed, that he would keep it the same. But that is not allowed in that area-specific plan. Yes. Mr. Neri, any?
No, Madam Mayor, that's, that's what I would've said exactly the same. It, I, I think it's too complicated to even do as a remand. I was thinking, was that a possibility? But we're talking about a much more complicated application, because now we're actually requesting a different zone, which might require amendment to the, either the comp plan or the ten-mile specific plan, and a zone that would allow this type of use, like Mr. Hood was saying, that could allow for that. I, I think that may be more complex than a simple remand. And I don't know if Ms. McKay has a different perspective of that. But it, it might be better, if they want to do what they like to do, to withdraw this application and bring back an application with the proper zoning and the request for the appropriate amendments that are necessary to make that fit the ten-mile plan. And maybe planning has a different perspective, Madam Mayor.
And, and the, the land uses were, that were contemplated in these areas were all part of the ten-mile area-specific plan. So, that plan is mirrored with the comprehensive plan, but gives the comprehensive plan more detail.
I mean, I, Madam Mayor, I certainly didn't wanna open up a can of worms here. And I feel like I sort of have inadvertently. It's just me, maybe I, I wasn't familiar with the, the layers of the onion as it relates to this geographic area in the comp plan. So, I, I could be, Mr. Wolf, maybe the advice I just gave you was completely off-base.
I like the idea. It was very nice.
Thank you for saying that.
Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions, Madam Mayor, Councilman Barrett. We did have this discussion with the staff. And the staff said, you know, "If you were to come to us and ask for, say, a rezone to, like, an IL, or, or one of the other commercial zones that would allow just a straight storage facility, we would have to recommend denial, because that wouldn't be in compliance with the ten-mile area-specific plan." So, we were kind of, you know, and the staff admitted, I mean, even Caleb said, "I think what you're trying to do is a good thing. I think it will benefit the multifamily. I think it's needed out there in the ten-mile area-specific area plan." But this is how, you know, you would have to go about it. So, you know, we've been grappling with this, how to make it work. And I guess, you know, when, when, when Gray and his partners and their attorney read the language the staff has here, it, then it became very glaring that, okay, now, you know, what if, what if we encounter a problem? And the, you know, we're only at seventy-five percent capacity with ours, and, and we can't fill the twenty-five, because we don't wanna violate our condition. I mean, we, we wanna play by the rules. And, and so, you know.
So, so, Gray Wolf, ten-mile development. In the, in the, I guess, the write-up, there's a statement in, it's under two, under City, City Agency Comments, under Planning Division, Item 2B. There's a statement that reads, quote, "The storage facility is allowed to operate in conjunction with, as an accessory use to the multifamily development to the north, i.e. Silver Oaks." And then it goes on and says, "And shall only provide." If you read that statement, and the statement ended at Silver Oaks, that it was to operate in conjunction with the apartment complex, Silver Oaks, period, that handles it. It's the "only provide storied service for residents of that multifamily development." Providing storage for non-residents, it goes on and on and on. I guess my point is, we can live with the language that says it's allowed to operate in conjunction with as an accessory use to the multifamily development to the north. The part we can't live with is the restrictive, the restrictive statement the rest of that statement reads. So, what, kinda like what we said, we're going, we, we, it's, it makes business sense. We're going to do that. If you just struck the rest of it, then we can, we can live with the code, and we can do what the intent is here. It's just that there's no commercial way for us to police it, prevent it, unless we ask for the rezone, and then the staff doesn't, uh, doesn't wanna recommend a commercial rezone for the use. So, we're kind of at a loss. I just don't really know where to go.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I would say yes, but I fear future councils, who would go, "Oh, look what they're doing over there." That's, da-da-da-da. I'm a big ask for forgiveness and permission, but you're much wiser not to, to get to the point that you're at today. So, really, my question is, you, you had mentioned the, the idea, and then staff said that they would have to recommend denial. My question to staff is, assuming you recommend denial, and we would be even legally allowed to do it anyway, would you rather us rec, I know, I'm gonna put you in a weird position here, 'cause I'm gonna ask for an opinion, 'cause you guys do an amazing job of making sure that we're straight and understanding what code says. But, but I, I'm, I'm curious for an opinion. Given especially that we, at least I don't, I'm assuming there's nobody here that wants to throw a fit over this idea. Would you rather us go against the, a recommendation for denial? And approve it, assuming we could? Or would you rather us change the map to allow the zoning and go that route?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, Councilman, any way you go, a storage facility, a standalone storage facility is not a desired use in the ten-mile interchange-specific area plan. Staff was very clear with the applicant, and that's why the DA provision is worded as it is upfront, that it is only allowed as an accessory use. Even if you were to amend the future land use map included in the ten-mile interchange plan, even if you went to a mixed-use commercial designation, storage facilities are not a desired use in the ten-mile plan. And that, that was the plan that was approved by city council. Certainly, if you want to approve this through that means, I would suggest that you go through a map amendment and a rezone. Staff cannot make a recommendation of approval on that. But that is something, if you wish to do, that, that is certainly your purview.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And here I find myself being the future council to the past council that they were afraid of when, when making that plan, saying, "Okay, here's what we're gonna outline, 'cause this is what we don't want in the future." But in this circumstance, given that it's, it's not, you know, you, you're not coming to us saying, "Hey, I wanna develop these forty-five acres into storage units," which may make sense to us to do, where it is a very atypical, I heard that word earlier, I've never used it, but I like it, situation that I, I think makes sense for us to ponder on the, on that, and, or at least contemplate on it.
Mr. Neri, I guess I, or to planning staff, is this something that could be an accessory to this development and the neighboring development, if, if that got him more customers? Because it's the same use? I, just looking for additional opportunity.
Madam Mayor. The UDC defines accessory use as a use or activity that is incidental and secondary to the principal use and is conducted upon the same property. So, that's where we get hung up on the accessory use.
And I like that, Madam Mayor, I like that idea, and I think Mr. Doolan would be open to it. He's reduced the density. I think that's a great idea. But you still have the problem of someone coming in off the street, and how do you turn those, how do you turn those people away?
Very easy, you don't live here.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Wolf? Thank you for this new application.
I learned something today.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony? Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I mean, this, this is where, you know, I grew up with frustrations in, with government. Well-intended purposes in the past by a, a past council to, you know, create this ten-mile plan with the comprehensive plan, the whole thing that brought us here today, which now, a past council, completely unable to foresee this specific situation, is now making us go, "Well, this is the way it is. We'd love to figure out a way to make it work, but it's just too complicated." That, that's why we are, it, often, we can claim that we are built for business, designed for living, but in this circumstance, unless we figure out how to make this happen, 'cause there's nobody objecting to it, we are not. So, whatever, whatever it is, whether, you know, they make the recommendation for denial because it doesn't fit, and we approve it anyway, or we make a, a change to the map, or we pluck this out of the ten-mile area plan, whatever means we have to be able to make this work, I think is incumbent upon us to figure it out and make it so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
A council member, a couple of months back, went on and on and pontificated about trusting the process. And that sticks with me in a lot of the things that we do, that we have to trust the process. And plans, like our comprehensive plan, our ten-mile plan, are designed specifically so that city council doesn't make a willy-nilly decision on a Tuesday night. We plan, we prepare. And yes, plans don't take into every single circumstance before, but it's designed to represent the value of the community and the vision for our city at the time. What's great is that we've got a process to amend that. And I think there's an opportunity for development to come before us. And to me, I think it seems appropriate. What I think is really great to see, and what I can sense your frustration, Councilmember Palmer, is that it sounds like you have a council that says, "Boy, storage units today, yes, we think makes sense there." But it's contrasted with, do we really wanna fit a, you know, a square peg in a round hole? Especially when there's ample opportunity for development to come in and do that on their own. Honestly, a storage unit that is for apartment dwellers, that is an amenity and accessory, I think is a forward-thinking idea. And I think ten years from now, we're gonna have lots of multifamily that are going to include storage units. And, and Mr. Wolf is just ahead of the curve on that. And I know development's taking notice and saying, "Holy cow, that's a great idea. We gotta do more of that." Councilmember Mylum and I were talking like, "Oh, storage facility, that makes sense. No neighborhood opposition? Boy, this seems like, like a no-brainer." But then you dig in, and it puts staff in a very awkward spot. And I know that you guys know this, but I think it's important to say, it's not staff who says, "Oh, we're choosing to deny that." It's not, they wake up, and they didn't have breakfast, and they're in a bad mood, and so they're gonna deny. They're following the code. They're doing a great job. They're doing what we asked them to do. So, it's not staff that's denying, it's the plan that's causing the denial. So, I like this idea. I like it a lot when it's designed for your apartment, you know, your residence. If you wanna bring it forth as something that's open to the public, I'm great with that. I recognizing you're gonna get a recommended from denial from, from, from staff, but I, for the most part, would be supportive of that, should it come back in a different form. So, I, I appreciate Councilmember Palmer's comments. I do think that we are built for business and designed for living, because I think we've got a really fair process that allows both parties to discuss this issue and render a decision they think most appropriate. But planning is an important part of what we do as a community. We're not Houston, where you just build whatever you want, however you want, whenever you want. We build plans, and we run the plans. We trust the process. We build plans, we run the plans, we trust the process.
So, we still have an open public hearing. Any further questions for the applicant? Any further information from staff? Any further comments from the applicant?
Madam Mayor, if I may just make a clarification, I've heard some different discussion going on, um, in support of this standalone storage facility. I would note that it would need to come back in with a map amendment to the future land use map to change the designation. Just a, a new application wouldn't be accepted because it's a prohibited use in the district, so, just for clarification. Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
So, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that removing the condition that allows only, uh, the use from the Franklin apartments would then not have staff approval. Is that correct? Do you have that as a condition in there? They wanna remove it, you, you recommended approval, if that was removed.
So, Madam Mayor, if I, sorry, Sonya, but if I, I'll just tackle that real quick. The, the real problem is our code doesn't allow that, so you can't, you effectively can't do that because city code prohibits it. It would be like allowing a multifamily fourplex in our R2 zone. Our code just doesn't allow it, and that's the issue. That's why the condition is there, because the code says the only way you get to do this if it's on the same property as the primary structure and it's tied to and commiserate with the, so it's not, I wish it were that easy and you could just strike it and say, oh, no, that, but the condition basically is just regurgitating city code. It's based on that zone, this is how it has to operate.
Right. They tried to make it work, um, as an accessory use if it were for the tenants.
Right. It makes sense as an accessory use, yeah, and that, get that part, I was just trying to figure out if it, if it legally was possible. So. And Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mylum, just to answer your question more directly, even if you delete the latter portion of that sentence, the first part says, a storage facility is allowed to operate in conjunction with and as an accessory use to the multifamily development to the north, i.e. Silver Oaks. I mean, to me, that's pretty, pretty clear with just that statement, the, the last part was added on there just to make absolute clear. So. But, we don't necessarily have to have that wording in there. You're okay with it deleting that last part of it?
Madam Mayor?
You can do what you want, but the, 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 it's, it's still only allowed to, to operate as an accessory use. We can't approve something that's against city code.
Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor, that's, it's the inclusion of the final sentence, or the "and shall only provide" that makes it an accessory use. And if you strike that, that's the challenge from the way code is written, if you strike that language, then it's no longer an accessory use, so it's no longer compliant. But, I mean, this seems like a disagreement, or I guess a, a choice of path that should have been resolved months ago.
Madam Mayor?
If you pick the path of going down this type of application, early on, you're picking a path that says, we are committed to making this complex available to these apartments to no, to the north. And that the application, it seems like, requires it, it's not a discretionary call for us. So, if you wanna apply that way, it sounds like that's what the applicant would be asking us to approve. If they don't wanna do that, maybe it's withdrawn or, or denied. But, path two would be to do the package of applications that is the map amendment and zone it differently to allow this to be utilized by anybody. And so, the applicant, knowing the restrictions, better for worse, that are placed on this property, picked a path. The problem is that we got all the way to this stage without agreement on that qualification for use, which is not discretionary, that it sounds like from Mr. Nary and you, Sonya, that we don't have the choice to strike language, it's the requirement of that zone, so.
But, Madam Mayor?
Puzzled, puzzled while we're here debating it.
So, in the first sentence, though, it, it says as an accessory use, so the second part was added on afterwards, and that's just being redundant. So, it already says in the first part of the sentence, so basically, we're talking about policing, right? What happens if they, if, if it's approved like that as an accessory use for those apartments, just like it says in there, and then they choose to rent to the apartment next door?
Madam Mayor?
What happens? Like?
I guess, the question, and, and Mr. Nary's better suited to answer, the, the, the problem I see is the mere declaration of something as an accessory use doesn't make it so. I mean, you could, you could state that something is an accessory use and merely stating it might not be enough.
Madam Mayor?
I was just waiting for everybody to say. Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, so Councilmember Mylum, maybe to answer your question, any, anybody that violates the code is subject to code enforcement, so the city could take civil action against them, file an injunction, go to court over that when they are knowingly violating the code. I agree with staff's, um, addition to the sentence to make it clear what accessory is. What I would prefer the city council not do is reinvent the meaning of accessory, because accessory has three different terms in the UDC that have different meanings, but yet all have the same language about tied to the property, attached to the use that's already existing, on the same property. That's been consistently interpreted by the staff in a variety of different applications to mean the same thing, related to the property, on the property, for the use of the people on the property. So, to reinvent that with 50% or whatever percentage would completely not only change the meaning of that section, but would then reinterpret that code for everyone. And if you look at the 10-mile plan and the area it covers, if you look at the aerial map of the area, majority of it's undeveloped. So, you would be changing it for all of the area there without, really, with, with one piece, and so that's, that's the concern. I think Councilmember Borton's correct. They could have come forward with a request to change the map with the staff's recommended denial, with the statements that's planning is stated, that was not what was intended in the 10-mile plan, they chose not to do that, they chose to apply knowing the staff recommendation would be, it has to be just for the Silver Oaks facilities, and they chose to continue coming to ask pla-- and they got an exception, a very slight exception from planning and zoning, to allow them to lease them to their residents for one year after they are no longer a resident, which is very much stretching the code anyway. And they've got that exception. To go beyond that would pretty much swallow up this, this accessory definition to mean probably nothing, and that's what I would be concerned about.
Madam Mayor? I guess, I guess for clarification, then, is accessory to the use mean to that use and only that use? So, I mean, it could be an accessory, and the people are there, it's there, it's on the property, they use it, but in code, does that mean that nobody else can use it?
So, Councilmember Mylum, to answer your question, so accessory use, as, as it's stated, Ms. McKay said, a use or activity is incidental and secondary to the principal use and is conducted upon the same property. So, it has to be related to the use that's on the property. And accessory use home occupation has the exact same language, secondary to the, to the residential unit on the property. Accessory structure, again, is related to the use that is already existing on the property. So, we use accessory in lots of other areas of the code as well, not just the UDC, but it's always related to the use that's existing on the property, has a relationship to that use.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
The, the beauty of the extra words in the sentence that was included is that it's, it's adding clarification to the layman, that this is how the city's going to interpret this, whether these words are there or not. Um, and so, as much as any of us may like to, you know, with a wink and a nod, say, we'll take this portion out and then interpret it how you will, and we just may not enforce it, doesn't actually provide any protection from government. So, I, I wish that we could approve this tonight, but I, I don't think it's gonna help you to do that. So, my question for you guys would be, do you want us to approve it with the language that it is today, and then you can decide later whether, whether to bring a map amendment and a rezone to something that would then provide you the protections from us later on? Or continue as you can remove it or deny it today? Madam Mayor? Maybe, maybe a different question.
Mr. Burnt.
Maybe, maybe a different question to ask would be, is this council open to the idea of a map amendment? That would probably be a, a, a better question to ask that wouldn't evolve.
Didn't notice that.
No.
I guess I see Mr. Nary shaking his head.
Sorry, Councilmember Burnt, I don't mean to interrupt you. I, I'd really be concerned about that sort of global discussion, you haven't noticed that, they haven't asked for it, you haven't noticed it, you're having a discussion that's not been on the notice of the public, you're discussing potentially a map amendment to your plan that hasn't been asked for, I'd prefer you not do that.
We tracked that question.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, I didn't hear it.
Mr. Palmer.
Would it be appropriate for us to discuss, because that's been the, the point of the topic, is, is whether we're open to a storage unit on this property designed like this that would be available to people off of the property? Not necessarily a map amendment, but are we open to this being, taking place?
Madam Members, that would probably be, at least it's more relevant to what they've brought up. If you're, if the, if the direction after that was then go back and go do the proper application to make that happen, that would be appropriate.
I guess, same question, different way to ask it.
He wants to answer the question.
Planning on the fly, sorry. Becky McKay, Engineering Solutions.
So are we.
So, we kinda talked about the condition, and so, they fully understand, and they don't wanna put the council, you know, on the hot seat here, and they understand that staff is doing their job. I mean, the staff, their hands are, nine times out of 10, their hands are tied, or 9.9 times out of 10, their hands are tied.
I, I think Becky, too, we've been criticized that we're not following our plan.
Sure, sure. And so, um, I think, you know, they, they would obviously like to move forward, um, and if this is the only way that they can move forward at this juncture is with the condition as it reads, then at least we would have an approval in our, in our pocket. Um, and then we can regroup with the staff, um, and talk about what is a palatable solution, so that then we could come back and go through the process and have the discussion, when you guys don't have to go on the record at this time and say whether you would be supportive of a comprehensive plan amendment or a commercial zone that would allow this so that they would have some flexibility. And, and I think we got this, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Borton, this far, because they weren't quite sure how to interpret and digest that condition. And, you know, when they started doing the what-ifs, and then their attorney came in and said, you know, what, I don't, I don't like it, you know, but I guess we would like, we think this is a good use. I think it's excellent. It's small in scale, it's not like your standard, you know, storage facility. This apartment complex needs it, this area needs it. I'd like to see it approved, and if the only way it can get approved is with this condition intact, as the staff and the Plans and Zoning Commission has laid it out, then, then we accept that, we'll get with your staff, and we'll work on a creative application to bring back before this body, so that we don't run into any code violations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
I guess we already asked if there was other public testimony. I move that we close the public hearing on item 90.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor?
Enthusiastic, too. Mr. Palmer?
I move we approve H. 2018-0109 with staff's conditions.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second, uh, is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Just briefly, I think what we don't wanna have, this is crystal clear, which is really perhaps difficult, but it's blunt, and if it's four or five years down the road and there's an application for a DA modification to try and dilute that language, it's not gonna, we won't have the discretion to do it then either, so, I know you know that, Becky, but it's, just so we're clear, this is one of those hurdles that can't be lowered, so. It's going forward, understanding that it has to be complied with, and there's not language down the road that I think can change it, so, it's being approved, subject to it.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
Sorry. Is everybody good on the one year after moving out? That was the other condition that Planning and Zoning put on. I originally came here thinking that was too long, um, based on turnover and again, the same kind of situation where you run out of room, um, for the people that have moved in, when you still have everybody that moved out a year ago, but at this point, it's kind of moved.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
I, I'm one that supports striking condition 2B, but I'm also not so beholden that I'm going to oppose the motion. I, I, I appreciate where Councilwoman Mylum's coming from, I think, I think anytime we create weird scenarios like this, it's always hard to keep track, it's challenging to enforce. Uh, are, are you gonna have somebody who wants to move in and can't get into the storage unit calling code enforcement, saying somebody's been in there 366 days? I mean, I just, anytime we add these types of things, I think they just are scenarios for more issues than they're worth, but.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt.
Another question I had is, was, was there ever, uh, an agreement with the adjacent, or with, with, in regard to the, the culvert across the Kennedy lateral? I think that was one of the things they wanted us to come to a conclusion tonight. Was that ever?
We're both.
The, Madam Mayor?
Did it with that? Okay.
I believe the adjacent property owner said they did not want any contribution, and they were gonna construct it on their own.
Yeah, that's right.
So, you didn't need that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Okay, item 9E is a public hearing for H. 2018-0105. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Borton.
Sorry, I apologize, I don't mean to cut you off. This application has within it, um, one of the issues is a cross-access easement that to an adjacent property owner who I've represented for well over 10 years, the, the pet hospital, and there's, one of the conditions is facilitating a cross-access easement to solve some access issues here. I've helped represent my client do that, there's no interest in this application at all, or the applicant. I've not had any discussion with the city in any regards to this, but, and I've talked to legal counsel to confirm that whether or not I could legally participate, he's confirmed that I could. Um, I'm still nonetheless gonna err on the side of caution, and while it might be permissible, I think just even the perception, if I'm involved in any component of a condition of approval, I'd rather just stay out, so, I've been out and I will just recuse myself from this application for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you for, for that. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for a rezone. This site consists of 7.24 acres of land, it's zoned IL Light Industrial, located at 1550 South Tech Lane on the north side of West Overland Road midway between Linder and Meridian Roads. This property was part of a plan development approved in 2001 for Treasure Valley Technical Center, which encompassed a total of 33 acres of land and allowed professional and sales offices, a daycare center, and a community and neighborhood shopping center, retail use, with approve, with approval of a conditional use permit, along with any allowed uses in the IL zoning district. A concept plan was approved for the plan development as shown there on the right. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for the site is commercial. A rezone of 7.24 acres of land is proposed from the IL to the CG zoning district, consistent with the future land use map designation of commercial. The existing and continued use of the property for retail, office, and church uses is a principally permitted use in the proposed CG zoning district. No new development or redevelopment of the site is proposed at this time. The applicant is requesting the terms of the plan. The applicant is requesting the terms of the plan development no longer apply to this property as a provision of the subject rezone application. At the direction of the city attorney, staff has included a provision in the development agreement for the terms of the plan development to no longer apply as requested, rather than modifying the original plan development. City services, sewer and water service, and police and fire protection are currently provided to this property. Due to the limited sanitary sewer capacity available to this property, all new proposed tenants should first obtain approval from the Public Works Department prior to leasing and occupying space within the building. There is an existing full access for this site via South Tech Lane, a private local street, and an existing full access via West Overland Road and Artorial Street, shared with the property owner to the east, Intermountain Pet Hospital. The ingress access to this site via Overland is located on the adjacent property to the east, while their egress is located on this property. This is the sole access for the property to the east. Although the shared access physically exists and is being used by both parties, there is no ingress-egress easement currently in place. Although I will say that the applicant's representative did email an easement to me today that was signed by the applicant, and the city attorney's office was reviewing that to ensure compliance with our conditions of approval of this application. Mr. Neri may be able to clarify when he gets back if that easement meets our requirements or not. The applicant was intending to get that easement recorded today, but I have not yet seen a recorded copy of that easement. Just wanted to mention that. So, because previous to this, there has been no legal means of ingress to this property or egress for the adjoining property via Overland Road. Staff is recommending a reciprocal cross-access ingress-egress easement is recorded with the adjacent property to the east prior to rezone ordinance approval, if the applicant wishes to retain the access via Overland Road. Street buffers, landscaping, and sidewalks exist on this site along West Overland Road and South Tech Lane in accord with UDC standards. There are two existing loading docks areas, one on the west and one on the east end of the building facing West Overland Road, that the applicant wishes to continue using. Current design standards do not allow loading docks to face an artorial street. However, because the loading docks were lawfully constructed at the time, they are considered a non-conforming use and are allowed to remain and be used, subject to the standards for non-conforming uses. In industrial districts, a minimum of one off-street parking space is required for every 2,000 square feet of gross floor area, compared to one space for every 500 square feet in commercial districts. A total of 222 off-street parking spaces currently exist on this site. However, the eastern portion of the parking lot is proposed to be reconfigured, which will reduce the parking spaces to 215. Based on the square footage of the building, 106,000 square feet, a minimum of 212 spaces are required. The existing and proposed parking complies with the minimum UDC standards, although staff is concerned there will be adequate parking for the uses. The applicant should be mindful of the type of potential tenants and their parking needs to ensure adequate parking continues to be provided on the site. The commission did recommend approval of the proposed rezone with the requirement of a development agreement per the provisions in the staff report. Summary of the commission hearing, Heath Clark, Spink Butler, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented on the application, nor was any written testimony received. Key issues by the discussion, of discussion by the commission, they were in favor of the reconfiguration of the access for the site and the adjacent site to the east. They did discuss the loss of industrial zone property. The commission did not make any changes to the staff recommendation, and there are no outstanding issues for council tonight. If I may just clarify with Mr. Neri, did Mr. Neri verify that access easement? Do you know?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, Mr. Bird was able to review that before the end of the day. This meets all the requirements, and so, it's good, good to go.
It just needs to be recorded yet to.
Yes.
Comply with staff's recommended conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burnt.
Madam Mayor, after Mr. Borton's comments earlier, I probably have a potential concern as well. Alteris is one of my customers. However, Alteris Capital has many businesses that they own and operate. I currently do not do business, nor I don't believe I have ever done any business with this, this particular business that Alteris Capital or Alteris owns. But with that in mind, because of the perception of, you know, that I may or may not have an interest, it probably would make sense for me to recuse myself as well.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I did, excuse me, I'm sorry. I did forget to mention, I did receive written testimony from Heath Clark Spink Butler, Spink Butler, the applicant's representative, and he is in agreement with the staff report, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no questions at this point, would the applicant like to comment?
Jeff Likes, 1119 East State Street, Eagle, Idaho, 83616. We're here, here on behalf of Heath Clark, who's double booked tonight, so we are Alteris' architect in here tonight for that. We are just, we have, we're in agreements also with the staff report, and if, I just stand for any questions, if you have any questions at all.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Ms. Love Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I'm not quite sure who to address this to, so I will start with you, sir. Having been a business owner and leased quite a few different properties, the, I must be honest, that the limited sanitary sewer capacity and getting approval from Public Works Department makes me really nervous. How do you handle that with potential customers, potential Leesees?
That's a good question. This place is currently full. Like, it's, it's leased out, and I don't think there's any, at this point, no one's leaving anywhere. So, I don't have an answer for you for that. I've never actually, in years and years of doing this, I've never had that come up in any project, and so, I think we just address it as we go and see. I mean, I, I don't know, to be honest.
Okay.
I don't have an answer. I mean, it did, you know, the place functions today, completely full, functioned for years as whatever, it was, you know, wasn't this full before with what uses it used to be, but it is 100% full today. So, with completely different uses on what it originally was designed for, so.
Honest answer, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Good question. Okay, thank you.
Ram.
Okay, council, oh, Mr. Clerk, I can kind of guess, no one signed up.
No signups, Madam Mayor.
Sought I'd ask. Okay, council, seeing no public testimony, any questions for the applicant or staff at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Unless anybody else wants to recuse themselves, I think we can move to close the public hearing on item 9E.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Moving approve 9E, H-2018-0105, include a staff and applicant testimony.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 9F is a budget, oh, I'm sorry. I know, I probably jinxed it. Okay, item 9F is a budget amendment for Fire Station 4, for not to exceed a mountain. I'll turn this over to Joe.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the beginning of many times I will be standing in front of you, as I've been tagged to attend all the city council meetings.
All of them?
All of them. So, I'm pretty excited.
Till the, till the end of time?
Till, till the end of time.
Wow.
Yes.
How did you do that?
It's the short straw.
I said something, I drew the short straw.
You never do it. Don't play that game.
It's all good. It's all good. The chief and I have worked it out. Anyway, what, what you have before you is, the fire alarm system has gone bad at Station 4. The station was built in 2006, started in June. Apparently, it was throwing errors. I was one of those guys that was getting the calls at 3:00 in the morning, saying, hey, the fire alarm system's going off at Station 4, plus it was waking up the guys, obviously, in the station. So, I don't know if you've gotten the, the project evaluation, but it's kind of got the whole list of, of how many times people have been out there trying to get it repaired, and it finally came down to the, the panels need to be replaced. So, it just sounds like the panels have gone bad, to where they didn't, they don't function at all. So, they have a temporary solution up where we have, we hung smoke detectors in the fire station, which obviously is not to code, and so, we just have this budget amendment to get the, the panels replaced.
Okay, council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I've gotta know, so, when it does function, what does it do?
The fire alarm? So, in the fire stations, there, yeah, there's smoke detectors, like there's one back here above Councilmember Borton, that when the fire alarm goes off, it, it sets an alarm off, goes to dispatch, we get dispatched to the fire station as a fire.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, as someone that's been around for, some of you were not here when Station 2 caught fire, and the reason Station 2 got fire, they caught it was, they called, the alarm company called and said, hey, the fire alarm's going off at Station 2. So, we have had an incident where we've had a fire, so we, we really need this, just in case.
And the fire truck is not always in the fire station.
Yes, and the fire truck is not always in the fire station, which was the case of Station 2. It was right after it opened.
Any other questions? Ms. Love Roberts.
I was gonna say, if not, any other questions, I move we approve 9F.
I had a question.
Mrs. has got a question.
It could have been part of discussion. Ms. Mylum.
Oh, I guess it could have, sorry. Well, I was just wondering why it's so expensive? Like, we could put fancy alarm systems in all of our houses for that price.
That I cannot answer. I know they got the three bids that are required, and the, the low bid, I guess, was $10,900 and some change. So, that's, that's all I know on that part of it. Alarm systems, fire sprinkler systems are expensive, and, and especially in a commercial business.
Ms. Love Roberts.
Madam Mayor, if there are no further questions, I would move that we approve 9F, the budget amendment for Fire Stations 4 alarm panel replacement, not to exceed $11,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Thank you.
All ayes. Thank you, Joe, and congratulations.
See you next week.
In the following.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
You really scared me when you said this. This is the first of many times I'm gonna stand before you. I thought you had like a whole line of budget amendments ready.
No, 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 no.
I was kind of thinking the same. Any items under item 10? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
I had my.